Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Roseville City Council meeting of May 18, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haldeschild?
Here.
Councilmember Albert?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Ricucci?
Here.
And Mayor Bernascony?
Here. Thank you. I would like to ask Roseville native Mark Haney if he would stand and please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk if she would please read the meeting procedures.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we can go back real quickly to do the readout from our closed session that we just concluded?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The council met in closed session this evening to discuss one matter, and there is no reportable action from that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our procedures tonight. First of all, welcome, everyone, to the City of Roseville City Council meeting. If you're present tonight and have not already picked up an agenda, please feel free to help yourself here at the end of the table. As a reminder, the Brown Act does prohibit our city council from taking action or engaging in discussions on items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Those speakers wishing to address our city council tonight may do so by stepping up to the podium. Any speaker will be provided with three minutes to make their comments if the item is a non-agenda item. There will be a maximum of 25 minutes allotted for such section on comments. If a speaker would like to address an item that is listed on tonight's agenda, they will be provided with five minutes to express their comment. The timer is set at the podium, and when the red light blinks at the podium, you will be asked to conclude your comments. Lastly, if you will be addressing our city council tonight, please assist us, and we'd appreciate if you'd state your name for the record. Thank you very much, and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you. We will move on to item 5.0, which is public comments. It's now time for anyone to make a comment on any item that is not on the agenda. So far, we have one speaker card, so I'd like to call up Brooke and Robert Roser, please. If there's anyone else that would like to make a comment, you may do so after, and you can fill out a yellow speaker card that's at the end of the table. Good evening, and you have three minutes.
Okay. We live in Kirby Ranch, East Roseville. We bought our home seven years ago. Within a week, without any notification, we had the size of a prison wall mounted on the side of our yard, very emotional, without any consent. Our whole backyard has changed. We now stand at looking at a industrial-sized garage. When we bought our home and looked for homes, we did not want the layout of West Frosville. My husband grew up in East Frosville, Kirby Ranch, and that's what we wanted, and we loved our neighborhood. We loved the character of our neighborhood. We have established trees, and I have many pictures that I've emailed to city council about this, and I even have printed photos of this horrific, monstrous building that sits along the sea inside of my home. I'm sorry, I'm so nervous right now because I'm so emotional over this.
Our span of our driveway, I mean, where they put it, it's directly at my daughter's window and completely backed, so they're gonna, I guess, put a big RV diesel pusher in there, and they attach it to their house. That's why it's not freestanding and all the zoning.
Passed codes.
Yeah, that's how it passed all the codes, but we didn't realize it was gonna be 19 feet tall with the roof.
20 feet tall with the roof.
Yeah, so he's five feet off her fence, which is code, but he's also 20 feet up.
Here's a prison wall. I don't know if I'm allowed to show this, but it's awful.
Do you want to leave any, do you want to leave any photos?
I do.
Okay. We'll take those photos.
It's just very unfortunate, because now we're, we don't know what to do. Our backyard is completely ruined now. I don't know what about zoning. I don't even know how it passed.
It's out of character for this neighborhood. It's, everybody that has come to see the cranes that brought in these walls within a two-hour span were shocked. Nobody heard about this, not even the direct neighbor that lives next door. Every bathroom is peered down from windows that tower up. My whole backyard, we just spent over $100,000 in remodel last year to open our house to look at our beautiful backyard, and we have a huge depreciation on our home now because of this, and it's awful.
And we just thought the only thing we could do is come and talk to you guys to get our voices out there and at least get heard about it. It just, it just...
We don't know what to do.
Well, we don't know what to do. My daughters lived there for five or seven years now.
We've been there seven years. He's grown up.
And we're even thinking about moving, and right now with the, you know, with the housing market, there's no way we can move with mortgage prices or anything. So we're kind of stranded.
We were here to stay. This was our forever home, and none of you guys would ever approve of what just went up next door to our home if it was yours. I tell you that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Does staff have your phone number and your contact information?
I have emailed and CC'd all staff, City Council.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda? You may do so now. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to consent calendar.
Thank you. On consent tonight, we do have items 6.1 through 6.17, and so all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless there is a member of the city council, the staff, or the public that request a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, I've received no requests from either city council or staff, and so we'd like to open it up if any member of the public would like to pull an item for discussion Seeing none, Madam Mayor, I'd like to request a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.7 on consent, 17, on consent tonight.
Prove consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeschild, with a second by Councilmember Ricucci. With that, we'll start off with a roll call for Vice Mayor Haldeschild?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricucci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously on a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 7.1. It's the Dry Creek Greenway East Phase 1 Project, the Professional Design Services Agreement Amendment and Budget Adjustments. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the council. My name is Jason Shikowski, and I'm your Public Works Director. This item before you tonight is a small design contract amendment and a budget adjustment for the Dry Creek Greenway West Phase 1 Project. With me tonight is Mike Duer, the Pub Works Alternative Transportation Manager, and Terry Sheerhal, Environmental Coordinator for the City of Roseville. So the requested actions for tonight are to amend the Professional Design Services Agreement with SOMAS to complete some hydraulic analysis and mapping, the environmental permitting and mitigation plan, and engineering design for a trail connection to Sunrise Boulevard. Staff is also requesting approval of a $1.1 million budget adjustment from the state sales tax-funded local transportation fund in support of the $206,000 Design Services Agreement Amendment, $800,000 of right-of-way acquisition costs covering property needs along the entire project, and $100,000 for continued staff resources as we continue to develop and construct the project. Mike and Terry are here to share some additional details, so I'll let Mike continue.
Thank you, Jason, and good evening, mayor and council members. I just wanted to start with a little background on the project. This is a map of the project, just to get you oriented. Sunrise Avenue is in the middle of the slide, going from top to bottom. Douglas Boulevard, middle of the slide, going from left to right. The Dry Creek Greenway East Phase 1 Project is shown in red, a distance of two miles from Riverside Avenue to Rocky Ridge Drive. There's a blue segment shown, that's future phase of the trail, and there's also some dashed segments that show other future or planned bike paths. The solid black lines are the existing paths, Midu Park Path, and then the Greater Miners Ravine Trail. All of these trails are included in our general plan and Bicycle Master Plan. The Dry Creek Trail in particular is going to be an excellent alternative modes project that will provide key local connections for the city. It will also, with the aid of these other planned trails, facilitate connections to other regional trail systems at Folsom Lake State Park in Sacramento County. So this is gonna be a trail that will serve both recreation and transportation purposes to a variety of uses along the site, and it will add to Roseville's aim of being a healthy community and one of the great places to live in our country. The planning for this project started in 2008 through 2013, included multiple community meetings, neighborhood association meetings, and stakeholder group meetings. Ultimately, a preferred alignment was selected for a majority of the trail. However, there were a couple areas where multiple alignments were advanced into the project's environmental impact report, including Sunrise Avenue area. Ultimately, oh, excuse me, draft EIR was released in April 2018. When we released that, we made notification to over 10,000 Roseville residents and persons interested in the project. That included mailers to 2,000 property owners within 300 feet of the open space, including all property owners in the Sunrise area. Multiple emails were made to our project list, including our stakeholders group, and there were a variety of other ways that we got the word out. We then released a final EIR for final review. That was forwarded to the Transportation Commission and City Council. We received over 30 comments during that process, both written and at public meetings, and ultimately, the council certified the EIR, approved the project with south alignment, and adopted findings of fact for the project, and a notice of determination was filed on that project. And that started a statute of limitations on court challenges that ended April 19, 2019. Next slide. Actually, one more slide, just talked about that. The current construction cost is anticipated to be almost $15 million. That cost is in range with other city and nearby active transportation projects. The city has secured almost $11 million in discretionary grant funding through congested corridors and active transportation programs. These discretionary programs have complex requirements for timely use of funds, and the action before you tonight will help us continue to meet those requirements for the project. One other thing I wanted to add is that the Parks and Recreation Department recently did a survey in the community about what park and recreation amenities the community wanted. Far and away, walking and biking trails were the number-one desired amenity. 65% of respondents strongly felt that this was the most important amenity for the city to provide. The next nearest, at 22%, was dog parks. So the recommendation before you is to adopt the resolution for the Professional Services Agreement and adopt the ordinance for the budget adjustment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the information. Do my colleagues have any questions of staff before I open it up to public comment? Okay, I'll open this up to public comment. You, does anyone want to come forward and make a comment on this item? Good evening. Okay, so...
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, council members. Chad Roberts, on behalf of my client, Gordon Stevenson, and if I may, I'd like to approach the clerk to...
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I understand you've graciously offered us 15 minutes for a PowerPoint presentation that I hope may already be loaded, is that...
I think we're ready.
Excellent. I appreciate that, and I brought my notes, and I will stay on track to make sure I don't exceed that time allocation. It's been a long time getting here, and candidly, it's been a frustrating process. I'm used to standing here praising your staff, saying what a great job they've done. Unfortunately, I can't do this on this project. I firmly believe a flawed process led to a flawed decision. Fortunately, as I'll explain, there is still plenty of time to correct course and to get this right, and that's what I'm here to talk about this evening. Do I have a...
They're so good about clicking.
Okay.
It's like they just will read your mind, and they'll know.
Next slide.
Trust me.
Excellent.
Yeah, we'll test them on this.
That actually makes my life easier. So this slide is for context. You see Sunrise Avenue here. You see the old spaghetti factory on the east side. Obviously, you've got Linda Creek there. You have 730 Sunrise Building, number 100, closest to Sunrise. That's Chris Arrola's building. My client Gordon Stevenson's building is building 200 there in the middle. And then at the end there, on the westernmost end, you have the California Rural Indian Health Board or Crib Building. Next slide, please. And to be clear, we are in favor of trails, no doubt about that. There are eight segments of this project, and we have an issue only with the alignment chosen for Segment 3, which you see right there in the middle. Next slide, please. And for this segment, the city studied two possible alignments. You have the northern alignment, also called Alternative 5B, that you see depicted there in green. You also have the southern alignment depicted in pink there. That's called Alternative 5A. The northern alignment is superior for a variety of reasons. I'll get into more throughout my presentation, but one of the main reasons is the trail essentially already exists on the north side of the creek in the form of the city's existing maintenance bench. It was the clear consensus of the stakeholder group that Mike mentioned. It's the alignment that staff advanced as the proposed project in the EIR, and it's the alignment that the city advances the project in its competitive grant application. That's really important, and I will get more into that as my presentation moves on. And also significantly, it's the superior environmental, can't talk, environmental alternative, and it's also a lot cheaper. In contrast, the southern alignment basically has no advantages. It requires extensive retaining walls, which you can see up there depicted in black along the pink lines. It's environmentally inferior. It's gonna cost at least $1 million more. At least that's what the EIR said, and we have a feeling those costs are even greater now than when those estimates were taken. They're gonna dramatically impact the Meadowgate subdivision, and I have a laser pointer that I've left in my bag right now, but if you look at the bottom right there, do you mind if I grab my...
Oh, go for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So if you can see here, right there, the city is proposing to construct a bridge that will, you see, that directly connect into Meadowgate Drive, directly into that cul-de-sac in between those houses. And based on the city's 65% design plans, the impacts on the south side of the creek are even more severe and significant than what was known when the EIR was certified. Next slide, please. It's not just my client urging your council to return to alignment 5B. It's also, it's every owner, actually, west of Sunrise, California Rural Indian Health Board, Chris Arrola, California Wildlife Foundation, the California Oaks Program of the California Wildlife Foundation, and the Dry Creek Conservancy. Next slide, please. Mike got into this a little bit already, so I'll try to hit it quickly. This is a timeline of how we got here. City engaged the stakeholder representative group beginning in 2008. My client attended nearly every one of those meetings. Staff recognized from the first meeting that the northern alignment made the most sense because of the maintenance path that was already there, and as the options were considered, my client and other stakeholders successfully urged staff to pursue the northern alignment. City subsequently advanced the northern alignment as the proposed project in the EIR, and as well as in its competitive grant application. For reasons that do not remain, that are still unclear to us, after advancing the northern alignment for five years as the proposed project in the EIR, staff reversed course without explanation, without any new information supporting that change, and without ever reconvening that stakeholder group that previously had 10 meetings to wane on the project to inform them of that change. My client didn't learn what had happened until the summer of 2020, when someone from the city showed up to access his property. That's when my client engaged Al Johnson and me. We've been working with this, on this with staff, ever since. Frankly, this isn't the typical project that either of us takes on, but we recognized right away that this was a seriously flawed process that led to a flawed decision, and most importantly, it was just not up to the city's standards and was not done the Roseville way, and for that reason, we wanted to help. Last thing I'll mention here is that the city released its 65% plans for the southern alignment last year. Next slide, please. And once that happened, my client engaged appropriate professionals. He engaged an arborist, a biologist, and a hydrogeomorphologist to evaluate those plans. Next slide, please. Remarkably, to me at least, those plans reveal that of the 57 oak trees that are located between Sunrise, obviously here, and the eastern edge of Crib's building, only four of those trees are rated as being at low or moderate risk of dying. So in other words, you're talking about 92% of the trees are going to be removed or die, and these aren't just any oak trees. These are, some of these are 150-year-old oak trees that stabilize the bank. Put in different words, you won't recognize this side of the creek if you proceed with the southern alignment. For anyone who imagine riding their bike through a beautiful grove of heritage oak trees, forget about it. Almost every one of these trees is gonna be gone, and I think it's gonna be even harder to understand that decision when you look across the creek to the north side and you see an existing maintenance bench devoid of any trees whatsoever. Next slide, please. And I just alluded to these concerns over the loss of oak trees. It's just, it's not just aesthetic. These larger oak trees play a really important role in stabilizing the bank and preventing erosion. This picture is taken from the north side of the creek facing south. It's actually my client's building that you see in the background there. You can see just how steep the bank is here. You can see these large oak trees are stabilizing the bank, as the hydrogeomorphologist found. You can see just how little room there is between my client's building and the creek bank, and this is where staff is proposing to put this trail. And you can see in white here a couple of the hydrogeomorphologist's conclusions, and in the yellow, you can see one of the biologist's conclusions. And please note, this is not an issue of a faulty design. The engineers for the 65% plans did the best they could with that narrow gap between the building and the bank. There's only 35 feet between the edge of the bank and the edge of my client's building, and the physical constraints simply make it impossible to redesign the trail on that southern alignment and avoid destroying these trees. Next slide, please. Contrast this with the northern alignment, which would utilize the city's existing maintenance bench that people already use as a trail on both sides of Sunrise. It requires 600 feet less retaining wall, and the construction and bridges are gonna be much further away from that Meadowgate subdivision I mentioned. And I just have to say, when you look at these pictures, it's truly a no-brainer. This trail already exists on the north side of the creek. Why isn't the city taking advantage of that? And I just have to remind you, this is also the case with the northern alignment being over $1 million, more expensive with an opportunity to preserve what already exists on the south side of the creek. If you could go to the next slide, please. It's not just our opinion. We received this email in response to a record request. This is from the city's floodplain manager, Brian Walker. I'll read the relevant part there. "For what it's worth, I have always believed that Option 5B, which is the northern alignment, was best suited for our trail." Next slide, please. So how did staff come to prefer the northern alignment? The main reason is their preference for two points of access to Sunrise. And I'm here to ask you, how is that a benefit? Sunrise is a major arterial road. There are no bike lanes. There are no plans to add bike lanes. There are numerous heavily-traffic driveways along Sunrise that create multiple points of conflict for trail users who exit there. And just to be clear, this was discussed in the city's grant application proposing the northern alignment, and Sunrise has the highest crash rate of any road identified in that grant application. And just one other point, you know, it's not exactly desirable to create two easy points of access from Sunrise, given the existing issues that exist on the south side of the creek. Next slide, please. If you look at what you do on other trails, I think we all agree, this doesn't make any sense. The city smartly avoids direct connections to major arterials. Take a look at where the Antelope Creek and Miners Ravine Trails intersect with major arterials. There's not a single connection to these arterials like are proposed here, and I think the reason is because it's downright dangerous. Next slide, please. And I want to point you to this connection here. Another reason staff's, sorry, right here at the top in green. So another reason staff cites is to avoid the 500-foot-long access connection to Sunrise that was contemplated for the northern alignment. And again, how is this a negative? Shortened direction, direct connections to major arterials should be avoided, like the city does on its other trails, and you would already have safer connections with this northern alignment mere blocks away, to the east via Oak Ridge Drive, and to the west via Eastwood Park and its fronting streets. And if you want my opinion, if I was a policymaker, I'd eliminate that connection altogether. It'd be consistent with your grant application. It'd be consistent with what you do on your other trails. There'd be significant cost savings that have never been discussed. You'd virtually eliminate the need for any additional right-of-way, and you'd keep trail users out of harm's way, which I think should be a real top priority. Even if the city wanted to retain that connection, to our knowledge, there haven't been any objections from property owners on that side about the limited right-of-way acquisition. We think it makes sense. I mean, that maintenance bench is already there. Next slide, please. The final reason staff cites for switching alignments is that the southern alignment would require a low-flow crossing bridge and potentially require Central Valley Flood Protection Board variance. I gotta say, staff is taking inconsistent positions here between what it's representing to the city council and to the state in its grant application. As you can see in the correspondence here, the city's former floodplain manager recommended that the term "variance" be removed from the application altogether, because as he says, "We've been very successful lately in working with the board, staff, to not require a variance for our permits." Yet to the council, staff has stated the need for a variance as a certainty. Next slide, please. And furthermore, we just don't agree this is an issue. Again, based on the city's existing trail system, here are six examples of low-flow bridge crossings on the upper Miners Ravine Trail alone. Next slide, please. And finally, unrelated to the substantive policy decision about which alignment actually makes sense, which is what should matter the most, I know staff is telling you that you can't return to the original alignment because you'll lose your grant funding. It's the southern alignment or nothing at all, and I can't stress this enough, that simply is not true. That is a red herring, and it is just, it's disingenuous. We laid this out in painstaking detail, painstaking detail in our letter to you of a couple weeks ago, and I urge you not to let this, what we believe is a fabricated fear, prevent you from doing what we think is right. Next slide, please. In reality, we think staff has this backwards. The city must return to the original alignment to protect its grant funding, and you might ask why. The reason, which I already mentioned, is that the northern alignment is the alignment that the city advanced in its grant application. It's the project that was scored for purposes of receiving the grant. It's the project that's required to be advanced pursuant to the terms of the grant documents, and the only way to change that... And the only way to change that is through an approved change of scope through Caltrans, and the city hasn't even applied for that. Next slide, please. Here you can see that the city's grant application emphasized the benefit of constructing the trail on the existing maintenance road. And furthermore, you receive the maximum number of points for avoiding bike and pedestrian conflicts on the Northern Alignment. Yet you sense, we're talking about switching from the alignment that would avoid these conflicts to an alignment that would literally promote them by providing direct and convenient access to both sides of Sunrise. We just don't understand how this makes sense. Next slide, please. And one final point on scoring, the city received the maximum points for avoiding bike and pedestrian conflicts on the Northern Alignment. Yet again, staff has switched from that alignment that would avoid these conflicts to an alignment that would literally encourage them. Next slide, please. So to wrap up this point, we think staff has it backwards. The real risk to your grant funding is not returning to the original alignment. Your grant application and award is for the Northern Alignment already. Excuse me. And, you know, that grant application relied on the benefits of the Northern Alignment, including the public process you took to get there, including its reduced impacts, including its safety advantages. And then you're changing that without ever telling Caltrans. And for these reasons, we believe if the city continues down its current path and seeks an allocation of funds for the Northern Alignment, that request would be properly denied for failure to seek a change in scope. Next slide, please. Really quickly, this slide lays out the timing considerations for each of your funding sources. As you can see, the two of them on the right, there are no remaining milestones whatsoever. For the other two, various types of extensions are available if needed. I don't think those have been mentioned. And actually, as you can see here in one of these bullets, we're informed staff is already planning to apply for an extension in June. And quickly, I hope you can see how much time and effort we've put into understanding these documents and reviewing volumes and volumes of grant materials. We're not just saying this, we truly understand these documents, and we think we understand what can and can't be done. Next slide, please.
Mr. Roberts, you're over on time by about a minute and a half.
Oh, my goodness.
Are you able to wrap up?
I will, yes, I will be very quick. Just a breakdown of your funding sources. Again, the city has almost $4 billion in local funds that aren't subject to any project deadline whatsoever. Next slide, please. Even if you were, even if you face timing issues, and we don't think you would, by returning the original alignment, any potentially expiring grant funds could be prioritized on other trail segments that have no connection to the segment Sunrise. Next slide. I don't like to make this point, but it's important to understand, the greatest risk of delay here is that the city adheres to the Southern Alignment. The project still requires numerous permits from state agencies, none of which have been applied for, and you can see some of those here. Next slide, please. In conclusion, here's what we think you could accomplish by returning to the Northern Alignment. You'd restore trust in the process. You'd reduce environmental impacts. You'd protect Linda Creek. You'd provide a trail with safe connections. You'd preserve your grant funding. You'd deliver your project. And again, you'd save a lot of money. I firmly believe you still have the right to make the correct policy decision and, you know, to correct course. This trail never should have been moved to the south side. The city and its residents deserve better, and, you know, they'll be living with the results of this decision for decades to come. So I implore you to get this right and not simply stick with a bad decision because of artificial, you know, concerns about process. Last slide, and with that in mind, I distributed this to you all already. I'd respectfully request your council consider the following requested action. We're of course not asking to make a final decision this evening, given Brown Act limitations. We're simply requesting you direct staff to return with that option for your consideration in the future. With that, I want to sincerely thank you for your time. Mayor Byrne's going to thank you for a couple of extra minutes. I swore I would get through that in 15 minutes. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else tonight? Anyone else tonight that would like to make a comment on that? You can come forward to the podium now. Everyone else has three minutes. We had made arrangements with Mr. Roberts before. So just speaker after speaker, you're welcome to come up. And we just asked if the points become redundant, or they've already been made for the interest of time, please don't re-comment on those items.
Good evening. My name is Osha Muzerf, and I'm here, you've heard from me with respect to the issues that you just heard from Mr. Roberts about, but I am here today. Mr. Arola couldn't be here. He's out of the country, and he asked that I would show a short slide, a short video that I hope is teed up, that kind of just shows visually what you've been described tonight.
Thank you. I think we're ready for it.
Okay, thanks. Then I'll just have a quick comment right after.
Thank you.
Between 2012 and 2019, the Greenway Trail Segment 5 was proposed on the north side of Linda Creek, as shown on the previous map here. But in February 2019, the alignment was abruptly changed by city staff to the south side of Linda Creek. Currently, 4.5 million in federal funding is based on Segment 5 being on the north side of Linda Creek. This is the existing informal trail on the north side of Linda Creek. Maintaining this location reduces environmental impacts and controls costs as well. The Northern Alignment would cross safely under busy Sunrise Avenue Bridge on the existing This is the approximate location of Bridge 13 crossing for the Northern Alignment studied in draft EIR. With the Southern Alignment, the city proposes to provide easy, direct access to Sunrise Avenue despite being a major arterial with no bike lanes, thereby endangering future users of the trail who use such connections. Since there's very little space, nearly all trees on this segment would be removed or imperiled by construction of a trail here, requiring costly and impactful bank stabilization With such limited space for constructing an entirely new trail, there would also be erosion problems on the south side bank. The proposed project the public reviewed and supported in the draft EIR had the best alignment, which was along the north side of the creek. It would keep trail users safer, have fewer effects on oak trees in the environment, and was the project for which grant funds were awarded.
Thanks for taking a look at that. Yeah, I think that just visually shows what you've been hearing about. So just to underline a couple of points real quickly, and I know I don't have much time, but the future discretionary decisions, as Mr. Roberts pointed out, rely on a certified EIR that doesn't analyze those environmental impacts that are associated with the 5A Alignment on the south side. So that makes any future city decisions and also responsible agency decisions subject to challenge under CEQA because there's new and substantially more severe environmental impacts associated with that alignment that wasn't studied in detail in the EIR. And there's also a risk of it not being in alignment with the grant funding. So, and we didn't even try, and we could have, and maybe you'll hear more about tonight from others, about impacts to oaks to the east of Sunrise. Our work really focused on the west of Sunrise. But there is a fix to this to address the issues that you've been hearing about. The city already adopted an addendum to the certified EIR that made certain adjustments, and an addendum is certainly a very acceptable way to make minor changes to a project that do not implicate new and substantially more severe impacts.
You are over on your time. If you can just wrap up, please.
Yes. So we would like to see the city go ahead and prepare an addendum and then not take any further action today that relies on Alignment 5A, as that has not been studied adequately under CEQA. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Please come forward. And each speaker has three minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity. I live in Kirby Place, which contains Meadowgate Drive that was spoken of in the previous presentations. A number of the people here tonight are from Kirby Place, and I'm all for the bike trail personally, but not the south version. I think the north version is the appropriate one for all the reasons that have been stated. It will also, if it goes to the south side, it's going to impact our small subdivision. We're going to have a lot more traffic, very potentially, because it will become a trailhead, an access point. It will also give people access from the trail to our subdivision. We have a parking situation in our subdivision. We don't have a lot of spaces there. So this could potentially become a problem. Also, my understanding is they would put in a bridge at that point to take it back over to the north side, because it's impossible to go further on the south side if you're heading east. That bridge is going to have to be high enough to keep floodwaters, potential floodwaters, from damaging it, in which case, we have a number of homes whose backyards could be very visible from that bridge. We value our peace and quiet. We're not sure that we're going to have as much of it if that south trail happens. I would like to state that I was never notified about this trail until now. And I don't understand why staff would decide to make this change, because nothing that I've, and I've been reading some of the letters, that are all for the, all for the trail. I'm all for the trail too, but they're not distinguishing between the north and the south side. So I do not understand why the north side was changed, and the south side apparently has been adopted. And I would like an explanation of that, because I don't see anything good about it. And it appears to be more expensive as well. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm resident in the same community and more impact. I live on Meadowgate. My house is two houses away from where this new path, or the path, existing path would go into the bridge. The last couple of years, we've had an issue with transient people. We've had to call the police many times. Thank you for the police department. They do a great job. They're right there. I have an 11-year-old granddaughter who lives one house away from the bridge. We have other little kids on that street. We do have people going through there every once in a while, and I'm good at questioning, where are you going? We kind of blow off. I've gotten one guy flip me off, you know? And if this is going to make it easier for them to come across from Sunrise and come into our community, I'm not in favor of it. And again, as she said, we haven't gotten any notification. This is the first I've heard about it. And again, our cul-de-sac, we have one parking spot right in front of our house. They're going to park in the cul-de-sac, and we won't be able to have people come in that want to come visit us, that we entertain if we have parties. So my vote is no. It needs to be rethought. Again, I moved to the city of Roseville from Rockland because you guys are progressive in many ways, electric, you know, electric power, other things that happen in this community. And, you know, I'm glad I moved. But this is kind of putting a damper on it, so I've got to be upfront with you. So I'd like to see it change.
Sir, we'd appreciate having your name for the record if possible.
Oh, Carl. First name is Carl, K-A-R-L.
Thank you.
Last name is K-L-O-E-T-Z-E-R. Address 1121 Meadowgate, and I also own 1119.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? And if you can state your name, please.
My name's Cory Sullivan, and I live in the same neighborhood. My backyard, along with the number of these people, our backyard backs up to the south side of the creek. And the way our, a lot of you may not understand the way our neighborhood is, there's one way in from Kirby, and you go down, and there's two streets, and it goes and cumulates into the cul-de-sac of Meadowgate. And now, there's a little walkway that goes down to the creek right there. So I just want to make sure that you guys are clear that if you guys put this on, if the city puts this on our side of the creek, they're going, people are going to figure out that they can park in this cul-de-sac and walk their bikes through this little walkway, and there's no way we're going to be able to stop them. Right now, it's, you know, it's just kind of a walkway. But you're going to put bikes up there and await for them to access a bridge to that side of the creek? It's going to be a huge problem for us with homelessness, transience, that kind of thing. So anyways, I just wanted to make sure everybody was cleared that, how this cul-de-sac works right there. And I did see that they're going to do part of the construction up into that area. That was part of the map that I saw. You know, I could be wrong, but anyways, I just wanted you guys to understand how that cul-de-sac works and how it's going to impact our, that little cul-de-sac in our neighborhood. So.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to make a comment on this item?
Good evening. My name is John Robertson, and I live at 1113 Meadowgate Drive. I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac. One side of my property does have the public access to it. The proposed bridge that you have will end up almost in my backyard. I don't see the need for the increase in costs to put it on the south side. And nobody has addressed the fact that there is lots of parking back there. It's all private property. The spaghetti factory and office complexes are back there. Nobody has addressed that. That will be the area that will be more impacted by traffic and parking than in front of my house. However, anybody that parks in front of my house will find a little yellow tow truck taking them away. There are only three spots in the entire cul-de-sac for park, public parking. And if you continue with this, I'm going to try and insist that you put up signs that say "resident parking only," even though they are publicy, public-maintained streets, which need more maintenance right now. I don't know why it's taken, taken them a while to get to a terrible spot that's in front of Carl's house that's degrading, but I love this city. Of the police department, you guys are doing a great job. Somebody has made a misjudgment on changing the trail from the north side to the south side. Thank you.
Comments? Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this item before I close public comment? Please come forward and state your name, please.
My name's Melinda Meeks. I'm also a resident of that same neighborhood, and I'm a parent. And if you come into our neighborhood every evening between 4:00 and 7:00, you will see lots of children out there playing in the street, and also on the weekends. And we all gather and we're a community, and we take a lot of pride in our community. And if we have more cars coming in of people who don't take pride in our community, we don't feel that would be a safe place for our kids. And we have kids out there. My son skateboards, and he gets along great with all the other kids and all the other residents. And we have young kids that are young, two to six, and they're out there playing with their balls in the yards. And we want it to be a safe community. And our HOA, we work great together, and we take a lot of pride in making sure our neighborhood is clean. And our homeowners, they upkeep their homes. And it's a place that we're comfortable living, and we feel safe. And so we're just concerned, there are, we've looked at the maps, and there are other places that are more accessible, that are not as disruptive, I think, in accessing those locations. We also, like the gentleman said, have very limited parking. We each are limited to one parking space in front of our homes. And those are very, very limited, because our homes is made up of duplexes. So for a normal-sized home, you have two sets of residences there. So we just ask you to consider moving this to the other side on the north side of the creek. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else before we close public comment?
Hi, my name is Andrew Durr. I'm also a resident in the Kirby Place community. And, you know, certainly don't want to reiterate what everybody else has said, as you've asked, but I think one of the other things to consider is when it comes to building any bike and walking path, two of the really big benefits of that is looking at the beautification and looking at the safety of being able to build those trails. And building it in that proposed area south of Linda Creek is going to destroy those two aspects of that community. aspects of that community. Excuse me. I, I got my undergraduate degree from the University of California, Davis, which means it was a bike community. So I'm very familiar with the idea of bicycle, bicycling around everywhere. And I, I love being able to go ahead and do that. And I'm, I'm so grateful that the city of Roseville was trying to go ahead and help create that and help promote that. But in this proposed location, it's going to create more harm than it's going to create good in that location. It really is. Again, you're destroying the beauty. You're, you're destroying the safety in that community. And there's just, there's, there's got to be a better way to be able to go ahead and do this. I, I know there are other proposals out there. I know you've heard a lot of people speaking about the north side of Linda Creek, but I, I cannot stress, I cannot urge and impede for all of the council enough to look at another alternative, because there, there's got to be a better way. There's got to be another alternative that doesn't create more harm than good.
Thank you for your comment. Any others tonight? Okay, I'll close public comment. Want to give staff an opportunity to address any of these issues? Or does our colleagues have any questions we want to start off with? Is there preference? Do you want to hit on some of the comments that we've heard this evening?
Yeah, we'd like to do that. Thank you. So I just first wanted to hit on the alignment options. It was stated that there was a clear consensus for north alignment, and that's not the case. That is why we forwarded both alignments forward into the environmental impact report so that the city council could have a decision, could make a decision on the alignment choice. And I'll go over the reasons why we recommended that before, but I just wanted to reiterate that notice of the EIR was mailed to almost 2,000 property owners along the open space within 300 feet. And notice was mailed, and multiple emails were also made to the project list that included the stakeholder representative group. And those emails notified them that selection of the trail alignment in the Sunrise Avenue area would be part of the process. So there are some really key reasons, if you can move, go to the next slide, why we selected option 5A. I think the most important one is that it is extremely important, from a public safety standpoint, to have access to both sides of Sunrise Avenue. And we'll explain that a little bit more in a minute, whereas the north side has only one access point. Also, the north alignment directly affects six parcels, almost a third acre of private property that we would have to acquire. The south alignment does not require any right-of-way acquisition in this area of Sunrise. The other factor is, on the north alignment, to get access to Sunrise, we would have to put the trail within 10 feet of an office building. That's even less than what's provided on the south side, which is over 18 feet. And lastly, despite what was said, and I'll share that in a minute, that it is very likely that variance will be required from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. So if we could switch slides. So I've just given you an excerpt of the flood protection board's requirements. If a use does not meet their standards, which requires raising bridges above the floodplain, a variance is required. There is a waiver process, but they have not been offering us waivers on any recent projects, including the downtown bridges project nearby that has bridges raised above the floodplain and West Roseville's specific plan bridges. And I just also wanted to point out that the six bridges that were referenced by the, by the Mr. Roberts are, were all built in 1992, before these requirements went into effect. These requirements didn't go into effect until about the time that this EIR was under preparation. So these are new requirements, and the, the flood board is likely, and highly likely, to apply them to this project. Actually, Teri is going to handle this one.
Yeah. So it was, it was stated earlier by Mr. Roberts that the south alignment would require removal of 32 oak trees. And the city had a arborist survey conducted, also based on the 65% plans, that found that much more likely 18 trees removed. What their report probably didn't take into account, I can only assume there, but that the, the EIR does include mitigation measures to protect trees where possible. We would invoke all the protections in the city's tree preservation ordinance. We would have a monitoring arborist on site during construction to assist with minimizing the tree impacts, including, you know, making recommendations in the field during project construction to preserve trees where possible. If additional trees do need to be removed on, on the bank area, root balls would be left in place to guard against erosion. That's actually a requirement of, of one of the permits that we have obtained, the biological opinion from the National Marine Fisheries Service. So in short, oh, and one other thing too that wasn't mentioned, one of the mitigation measures in the EIR is a habitat restoration planting plan, which will include conditions in, required by the regulatory agencies like California Department of Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, when those permits are issued. So, and we're actually in the process of developing that habitat restoration plan, and part of the funding that is being requested tonight would go towards that plan.
Oh, have you already done this slide?
Oh, no, I wasn't going to, but I can. Yeah. And then, as far as the EIR not analyzing the impacts adequately, it does in fact address erosion impacts and tree removal impacts and mitigation measures concurrent with that to mitigate impacts too less than significant. Those would still be in place. And the EIR was not challenged back in 2019, when this project was approved with the southern alignment. Statute of Limitations for Legal Challenges has passed. That ended on April 19th, 2019. So from the, from that standpoint, it is, per California Public Resources Code, deemed, deemed CEQA compliant, so.
All right. Thank you, Teri. As I mentioned before, we were going to talk about the value of providing connections to both sides of Sunrise Avenue. I'd just say that providing connections to both sides of major roads is a best practice for trail development, and it's something that the city has done regularly. So despite what you heard, we actually have 18 major roadway under crossings of trails. 12 of those have connections to both sides of the trail. Three of them have connection to one side, and three, it's not provided. Two examples I'm showing right here are the Miners' Vine Trail at Roseville Parkway, where significant grade differences prevent those connections from happening. In one other, we had an issue, the connection would have had to go over a closed landfill, so we did not provide it. So in almost all cases, we provide connections to both sides of the road. And I have the next slide showing why we would do that. Our trails are really popular with office workers and residents before work, during the middle of work, or during lunch hour or after work. So this is just an example. If we chose the north alignment, there's only one access point, and that's noted by the blue dot. If you worked directly across the street and wanted to access the trail at lunch, which we really expect, you'll either have to go a quarter mile to the north up to Coloma, where we have a crossing, and then a quarter mile back down. Or you're going to have, or more likely, those people will cross Sunrise Avenue directly where the red arrow is. And that's something we don't want to encourage, we don't want to have happen. That's why connections to both sides of the road are important. And then, I just want to go over the construction funding again. As I mentioned, there's almost $11 million in discretionary grant funding. These are very complex grant programs, and they have very strict timely use of fund requirements. And we have been in contact with our Caltrans and California Transportation Commission representatives. I have an email from Lori Waters, who heads the active transportation program. I explained to her that we forwarded both alignments to them when we applied for our grant application. She responded back when I asked, is there a scope issue? Roseville's ATP application is fine if we go with the south alignment. That was an email we received yesterday. And then, the attorney said that we could segment out parts of the project using local funds. But that's not permitted by the Caltrans regulations. I have an email from Caltrans District Engineer Jackie Vang confirming, and when I asked him about the potential for segmenting it out, in short, the answer is no. We cannot allocate funds for other segments that we have grant funds on and then just segment out a little gap in the middle. And last but not least, the attorney did talk about extensions that might be available for the project. And we talked with Deputy Director Matthew Yozgat from the California Transportation Commission. He confirmed that with our June extension coming up, that all extensions for the current phase of the project will be exhausted. That means we have to deliver this project by next February 28th. Otherwise, we will forfeit the $11 million in grant funds. So we've been asked, can't we just quickly switch the alignment? And the simple fact is that we can't do that simply. The Caltrans process requires 20, a minimum of 22 months of design, environmental clearance, federal environmental clearance, and right-of-way clearance. We only have nine months to deliver the project. We're on track with the current alignment, but if we switch alignments, we will lose that $11 million. There was discussion about cost savings associated with the north alignment, and it's true, we recognized that when we sent this project to the council back in 2019, that there is a potential to save construction costs. But at this point, for us to switch, we would incur additional costs for design of $370,000, additional right-of-way costs, because we have to buy 1/3 acre of parcel property. The net savings is less than $500,000. And then, as I mentioned, we will forfeit the grant funds. And if we lose those grant funds, we've already spent $2 million in local funds since 2019. So there's an overall funding impact of $12 million to the city. I know some of the residents brought up crime and transient issues. In our experience, and in the experience of the Roseville Police Department, the trails bring responsible trail users to the open space right now. Those, it's pretty much people who want to be out of sight. So as we bring responsible trail users, they will help observe, report, and deter unwanted and illegal activities. And the trail will also facilitate public safety response and proactive police patrols and cleanup to the open space. We have been working with the sundown property owners for the last year and a half. We've offered enhancements along their section of the trail. That includes landscape screening and then fencing to demarcate the public-private boundary, video cameras on Sunrise Avenue, so we can monitor and help enforce activity, lighting under Sunrise Avenue to try to discourage loitering and angular rocks and railing under there as well, for the same purpose. This is a photo, actually, this is not a photo simulation, this is just a photo of what it looks like behind the 200 Building, Gordon Stevenson's building. So there is a bench there that we can use for the trail. And then this next slide shows what it would look like after the trail is in. We were going to try to save as many of those trees to the left as we can, but we do acknowledge that further down, there will be some tree removals, but just not as many as stated in the presentation. So with that, Jason?
Thanks, Mike. Next slide, please. So these are some of the conclusions staff has made about this discussion. The north alignment exposes users to traffic, increases potential liability due to the attractive nuisance of crossing the roadway. The realignment will delay the project for 22 months, which would result in the loss of almost $11 million in grant funding. And loss of grant funding effectively terminates the Phase 1 project, at least for the foreseeable future. Non-performance of this grant obligation will be frowned upon by the granting authorities and likely limit our ability to receive other ATP grants in the future and congested corridor grants, which we have used for numerous bike trail projects. It's one of the few grant programs we're actually successful in obtaining money for. We used it for the downtown bridges. We use it for other bike trails. But I wanted to just kind of leave council with a few thoughts. First, I'd like to mention that we have a talented six-person project leadership team with over 140 years of project management experience, working on delivering this project. And the three of us before you tonight have combined 80 years of experience, two and a half decades delivering projects for the city, for the community of Roseville. The outreach and public involvement for this project was not just met, did not just meet the minimum CEQA requirements, but went above and beyond those requirements with team meetings, et cetera. And the CEQA process, which I'd like to mention, not only protects the environment, most people think of CEQA about the environment, but it ensures the public's voice is heard and provides certainty to that same public and the project owner that the parameters that were discussed during the process will be used to construct the project. CEQA requires a period of time for discussion to occur and for differences to be worked out. Once that time period is over, it protects the expectations of the public and the project owner, as they spend millions of dollars and years of time developing projects and moving them forward. This project is at risk if we change the alignment. At this late stage in project development, years after those design parameters have been set by CEQA, we will likely lose 2/3 of the project funding if we stop moving forward with the current alignment. And not only lose that money for this project, but for other projects. And we will have no idea when we'll find another $11 million, multiple grant sources to come back and start working on this project again. So as a reminder, the item before you tonight is to approve a minor Design Services Agreement Amendment and approve a budget adjustment to continue working on the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your information and your presentation. Does staff have, I'm sorry, do my colleagues have any questions of staff? We want to start maybe Councilmember Albert or Vice Mayor Hattie Shaw. Anything from you, any questions?
I'm going to try to read my writing, so give me a second.
No, no, you go, you go ahead. I can't read your writing.
Okay, I'll start with a question and get these. So you've answered all of my questions that I had, but one of the things that, the comment that we kept hearing was around like course correction or changing. And can you clarify that? Because I think there's some confusion around forwarding the two different options and...
Go for it. Okay. So when we were meeting early on in the planning process, we identified the two different options. There was not a clear consensus. At that time, we told the stakeholder group... We told the stakeholder group that we would be forwarding both options into the EIR for full evaluation, and then the city council will get to make a selection. Now, California Environmental Quality Act does say you need to call one a proposed project. We did at the time call the north a proposed project, but we were clear that both options were on the table and that as more information was developed, that recommendation would be made. And quite frankly, the safety along Sunrise Avenue was a key piece of information and then also our developing understanding of what the flood board would require from us.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you want me to go this side? You guys ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
So when you switched to the south side officially, that was in 2019?
Well, you just explained, it's not a switch, it was...
Yeah, they were both considered in, the recommendation was first made in 2018 to the Transportation Commission at a publicly noticed meeting. Transportation Commission agreed with that recommendation, forwarded it to the city council. We did additional public notices at that time, and then the decision was made.
Okay, and so the EIR challenging has expired, that was in 2019?
Yes.
Okay. And my understanding is the, so it was approved, and then your other two items about the safety crossing, people being able to come up on both sides in order to access retail or coming from home or wherever, getting on the trail. But the crossing of the road was a safety element that we really try to avoid crossing roads like that.
That's correct. In fact, that was one of the findings of fact that the council made when they adopted the environmental impact report, the value of having access to both sides to minimize that safety risk.
I was there for that, I remember that. And then the other thing is the delay at least 22 months and possible loss of the dollars and definitely loss of the reputation for getting future grants. That's another big reason you're trying, we want to stay with the south side.
That's a real thing, the loss of the money.
Okay, so that's what I pulled out as the most important pieces of city's concern.
Vice Mayor Haldashout, any questions?
Yeah, no, first of all, thank you. I love it when the room's full. I love when there's community engagement. I'd love to get a better, I'd love to get a perfect system of community engagement, but there isn't. When you get a letter from the city, you go, yeah, okay. That goes over there with the publisher's clearinghouse, I'll get to it, okay?
No, it's not our neighborhood, it's not us.
Can you ask your question, please?
Yeah, I'm going to ask my question. 300 feet notice, right?
Yes.
Was sent in 2017, 2018?
April 2018.
And 300 feet would have reached the entire cul-de-sac, some of the cul-de-sac?
From the edge of the open space, so it would have probably been five houses in.
And we also provide this to, would have been provided to Arcona?
Yes, and many of the neighborhood associations participated in the early planning processes. And I can't recall if there was a representative from Kirby's side, but they weren't invited to participate.
And then we have Transportation Commission, some folks showed up at the Transportation Commission, offered their opinions. And then it came to the council in 2019 for approval of the recommendation from the Transportation Commission.
Correct.
Bruce, if I may clarify, there was no opposition at any of those meetings. Nobody came forward and said they disagreed with the southern alignment at that time.
All right, that's all, those are the only questions I had.
Any other questions over here?
I think one thing that stands out is how there are changes in rules with the flood and the flood issues about bridges. Because I remember we could build bridges that were underwater, you know, and at times during floods. And so it makes a difference, you know, if you have to build a different kind, like we have down for Royer Park and the other areas. And so that's important, and also the fact about if we need to have access to the major roads, that you have to have two sides. It's like, you know, you had, both these areas are really good, I walked the areas. But I'm looking at from some of the requirements that we had to have and also the funding and where we're at in the process is key concerns of mine.
My stuff's been asked and answered.
Okay, so, do any other comments?
Yeah, I do want to make, I do want to make one comment. So as the council's representative to the Placito County Transportation Planning Agency, where I also sit on the Capitol Quarter Joint Powers, where we have an important project called the Third Track, right over in historic Old Town Roseville. Staff is telling us is if we flinch, somebody's going to grab that money. That money's not going to be here for us. And I've seen it, you know, with all the way up to a staff member at the California Transportation Commission going against climate smart transportation things like this to support road projects. So we don't have the alignment before us. We have a funding question before us tonight, but I did want to share, and I appreciate you guys, everybody coming out, we need to do more of this in the neighborhood. But I want you to understand, this is not, they're not throwing up something that, you know, maybe might happen once in a while. It happens every day. Because the further away you get from your local government, the less control you have. And so I know on the $30 million we're trying to get for the Third Track, which will increase the number of commuter trips from one to three to 10, you know, we run into roadblocks all the time, so.
Any other comments, questions of my colleagues? Okay, you want to read the motion?
Yes. So tonight, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22-164, approving a First Amendment to Professional Design Services Agreement by and between the City of Roseville and SOMAS, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting Ordinance Number 6498, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, and declaring the ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriate measure.
So moved.
Thank you. So motion made by Vice Mayor Haldashout, may I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, seconded by Councilmember Rakucci. With that, we'll start off with our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldashout.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously on a five to zero vote.
Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move into item 7.2, which is the Roseville Entrepreneurship Program for 316 Vernon Street, the lease agreement, program agreement and budget adjustment. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and members of the council. I'm Wayne Wiley, Economic Development Manager, and the item before you tonight is for a lease agreement, program agreement and budget adjustment for the establishment of the Roseville Venture Lab and associated program implementation. Now, this is in partnership with Mark Haney and the Growth Factory. And before I get started in my presentation, I just want to note, I'm extremely excited to present this to you this evening. This is the first allocation of ARPA funds, and it's really been a culmination of efforts that have spanned about 18 months, really involving considerable outreach and coordination with our internal departments, as well as our community and regional partners, some of whom are here tonight. So first, I just want to provide a little background or context. As you know, in October 2019, city council held a public workshop where economic vitality was identified as one of council's priorities. And in response to that, staff has been planning how best to diversify our economic development strategy, really to ensure that we continue to identify and support efforts that result in catalytic economic impact to our community. Now, Roseville has done a great job historically supporting our key industries and small business community. However, there is a regional need identified that notes that more emphasis should be placed on entrepreneurial support and innovation. And these efforts are critical because entrepreneurial support can help attract capital and talent and increase job growth and tax revenue. And so based on this, the initiatives outlined in the program document will be a cornerstone of the city's updated economic development strategic plan. And council will hear more about that from economic development staff over the next couple of months. And so on this slide, I first want to just kind of note that the approval of the program agreement before you tonight outlines Growth Factory's responsibilities in implementing the program document, which was provided in your packet and are hard copies provided to you on the dais tonight. And as noted here, the program document outlines the objectives for the first five years as follows. Year one is launch of the Roseville's entrepreneurial efforts, so that includes launching the space as well as the program. And then in year two, strategic implementation, that is basically taking what we've learned in year one and strategically implementing that to right-fit the programs that we offer. And then you have year three, capacity building and partner enrichment. And this is really in an effort to make sure that our partnerships are mutually beneficial. And then in years four and five, you have program advancement. Now, in addition to that, there are six initiatives, as noted in the program document. And I'm going to address each one of these individually, but first, just to kind of give you an idea, the overarching goals here are related to enhancing innovation opportunities, supporting entrepreneurs, facilitating workforce development, and nurturing existing talent, really in an effort to retain them in our community. So the first initiative shown here is space activation, which is mainly intended to increase activity in the downtown through the use of the space that will be leased at 316 Vernon Street. In addition, there will be an innovation challenge, which really serves to provide innovators with an opportunity to engage corporate and civic leaders. And then there will be the Roseville Rising Program. Now, this is going to be similar to Sacramento Bid's Calling All Dreamers Program, which is intended to help mainstream businesses launch within our community. And then you have also a variety of partner programs that will provide our leaders an opportunity to collaborate, mentor, and possibly assist financially or through in-kind services. And shown here is also the community engagement and enrichment piece that will provide participants the opportunity to attend events in collaboration with our strategic partners. And then finally, there will be a focus on inclusive economic and workforce development that helps promote and expose all of our residents to entrepreneurial opportunities, including community resources and vital connections. So here is the initiative summary that really highlights the programmatic outlay over the next few years. And I won't go into a lot of detail on all of these, as this is noted in the staff report and your program document. But I, in just looking at year one, I'll highlight that for space activation, the space will be open 80% of normal business hours. I'd also like to note that 25% of the Growth Factory's current operation in Rockland will occur at our downtown location. In addition to that, we'll have one innovation challenge, two dreamers programs in year one, two to four partner activities in the space, or partners actively using the space. And then we'll have community outreach events. And then finally, for inclusive economic workforce development and capacity building, there again, year one will be primarily focused on research to make sure that we're right-fitting the programs and collecting data to make sure we're serving our community in the best fashion. Now, on this next slide, I just wanted to highlight really our approach to implementation, which is really intended to be more of a dynamic and iterative process resulting in a program document that will be amended and based on feedback and data that we collect. And this graphic here does a good job of really kind of showing that and displaying that. So conceiving, planning, right now, we're in between the planning and action stage. And our goal is to measure and, based on the feedback that we get, learn from that, and then modify our approach moving forward. Now, in order for us to be successful in implementation of the program, it will be a collaborative effort with a variety of strategic partners. And so with the City of Roseville and Growth Factory taking the lead and working closely, there again, with our strategic community and regional partners and our downtown merchants, we're very confident that this effort will be successful. Now, a critical aspect of this project is having a brick-and-mortar location to run these activities out of. And so as part of this request, the applicant would be leasing approximately 2,400 square feet of space at 316 Vernon Street over a period of five years. And then there will be an option to extend with two five-year extensions. And then rent will be based on a percentage of market rate and will begin at 50 cents per square foot, and then increase incrementally by 25 cents per year, maxing out at $1.50 in year five. In addition, there's a, oh, if you could go back. In addition, there is lease buyout terms. And then the city has obligated ourselves to cover up to and not to exceed $330,000 in tenant improvements for permanent tenant improvements. Next slide. So, and then shown here is just a total project cost summary. And you can see in year one, there again, the total tenant improvements associated with this project, inclusive of permit costs and space design costs, will total $330,000. In addition, there's programmatic expenses in years one and two totaling $225 in each year, and then dropping down to $175,000 in year three. And then we'll also have $50,000 allocated for business incentive grants. And this will be funds to really help support businesses in locating in Roseville, or businesses who are looking to scale within our community. And so you can see the total project costs. If we can go to the next slide?
Quick question before you jump, the totals in that first column?
Yeah, that is just a typo. And so what's reflected in your staff report is correct.
Thank you, sorry.
Mm-hmm, no problem. So now, we do recognize that there are significant costs associated with this project. So it's important that I take a moment to highlight the leveraged resources and fiscal benefits. And so the following four points are critical to know. And so you can see here, funding will not come from our general fund, the general fund will not be impacted, and these will be ARPA revenue replacement funds. In addition, an estimated $9 million may be generated through direct, indirect, and induced impacts annually after year five. And on this slide, I would just like to note that that is a conservative estimate. That's assuming that we have one Main Street or kind of smaller type business and one venture-backable business scale within our community. In addition to that, lease revenue will total $115,000. Oh, go back, yeah, over five years. And then finally, the tenant improvements that I mentioned, the $330,000, that will result in a capital investment in a city-owned asset. So in the event that this is hugely successful and we outgrow the space, that $330,000 will stay as an improvement to a city-owned location. So in addition to the direct fiscal impacts, there are many other benefits to this effort, and I've just highlighted a few here. And for the sake of time, I'll just highlight a couple. Information technology has been the number-one driver of job growth over the last five years. And typically, those are a result in high-wage jobs. And then in addition to that, growing entrepreneurship ecosystem will bring awareness and assistance or marketing of our community and our region. And so on that point, you know, brand matters, and we want to be known as a place that supports and fosters innovation and supports the entrepreneurial ecosystem. So in closing, based on the cumulative benefits of the proposal before you tonight and the return on investment, staff is recommending that city council take the following actions. And there again, for the sake of time, I'm not going to read all of that to you tonight, but staff is available for questions. And we have Mark Haney and Growth Factory staff that's also here to address counsel.
Excellent, thank you. Do any council members have any questions of staff regarding the presentation before we go to public comment?
Yeah, one quick question. The hours of operation will be...
So we determine normal business hours to be nine to five. Now, that being considered, there are a lot of events that are going to occur after hours as well, just by the very nature of the...
So I'll be able to open the door nine to five, walk in and say, I got an idea.
Pretty much.
Any other questions on the presentation? No. Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. I know I have a couple speaker cards, so I can start with those. Zach Denny, you want to come forward? Or any order that you all want, but...
Let Mark go first.
Oh, all right, Mr. Haney, come on up.
Not that I have to leave.
I was getting past your bedtime, I realized that.
It is a little late for me. Thank you, Wayne. I'm Mark Haney, and I've been saying for a long... I'm Mark Haney, and I've been saying for a long time, working for a long time, that I am on a mission to ignite the entrepreneurial revolution right here in the hometown we love. Because as entrepreneurs succeed, the people of Roseville succeed as well. And there's all kinds of opportunity that is created when an entrepreneur has success. My mom and dad used to tell me, "Don't forget where you came from." And I grew up in Roseville. I learned many of life's lessons on the ball fields, football fields, baseball fields around Roseville. I learned entrepreneurial lessons right here on Vernon Street. And those lessons, they never came easy, right? But they made me who I am today. And so, today, when we come and talk about entrepreneurship and what it can do for a family, I want you to know that it's important to me. My wife and I have even decided we purchased our plot at the Roseville Cemetery next to fellow football coaches, so we can overlook the football games for the rest of our years. So, we are committed to Roseville. The Growth Factory is really proud to be partnering with the city to bring something very special and unique to the city of Roseville. And we couldn't be more excited. So, I would just want to thank Wayne, Melissa, Dom, the entire team here, of course, the council for considering this. I can tell you, we'll bend over backwards to make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wonderful.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rick Spencer. I'm a co-founder of the Growth Factory, board director, as well as a managing partner of our venture fund. I see the clock didn't start for Mark, but yeah, it's probably good to get it started for me. That's the respect that he has, and that's well-deserved. I'm also a proud resident of Roseville. I live in the Stone Ridge community. My daughter, she will be attending Ike Middle School next year. We moved from Southern California originally, and we're looking for amenities much like our community in Thousand Oaks. So, good schools, safe neighborhoods, you know, modern amenities. We found all of those in Roseville after looking at Folsom and El Dorado Hills and other communities. And what we were surprised with, myself being an entrepreneur, was the business environment and the business infrastructure. I often tell people about walking down my street in Stone Ridge and engaging a neighbor in a startup idea that I was working on for a sensor for athletes. And within two weeks, I had Roseville residents hired as medical directors, investors, we were engaging high schools in Roseville, Sierra College, et cetera. And that's now happening with the Growth Factory. My neighbors now are investors in the Growth Factory, they are entrepreneurs joining our startup accelerator, and they're also corporate partners. And so, it's happening, and we're really excited into what Mark said. We're really proud of the partnership. Wayne, Melissa, thank you for all your support. Dom, you know, it's been great to have your leadership. And so, I'd like to, you know, in addition to thanking them, I'd like to thank our other co-founder, Monique Brown, who's been significant in helping put together the framework for this program to succeed. So, we are excited, and we are, you know, I believe, I'm biased, of course, being a resident, but Roseville has all the infrastructure and all the leadership needed to be a world-class city. And with entrepreneurship, it can drive economic development and make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Ronna Godban. As the CEO of the Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of our 1,100-plus members comprised of business leaders, community leaders, nonprofit education, we strongly support Roseville's entrepreneurship efforts, which will be a key driver of job creation and economic development in our region. The launch of this entrepreneurship center will really foster an innovative ecosystem in our city to further build in our community's strength. We're extremely proud of the city's leadership and foresight in investing in these efforts, and can't thank the staff enough, the city manager, his staff, the entire city staff, but as well, the entire economic development team. You guys are incredible to work together collaboratively with all the key organizations, including the chamber, to support the business community toward common goals of fostering growth, enhancing innovation, and supporting our entrepreneurs. Having toured the Growth Factory facility in Rockland and met with several of their key stakeholders and team members, we were very impressed by their operation, and we're very pleased that the city has selected the Growth Factory to partner with and to work together to bring these economic development strategies here to our city. So, you can count on our support as a partner in this effort, as it aligns with our vision to advance the Roseville area to be the best region in California to live, work, and do business in. And I am now a proud resident since October, and I am very pleased of that decision to have relocated to Northern California and see the effort that the city has done to really be one of the best places to be. And we'll be happy to support the center, to make Roseville the next hub for entrepreneurs and innovators. So, we ask you to fund this center tonight, and I want to thank you for your time, service, and dedication to our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your comments.
As you can see, we rehearsed who goes when. So, good afternoon, Mayor.
I'll throw these out, then.
Exactly.
Just toss them aside.
We were having debate of not on the agenda, and what does that mean? So, Scott Powell, I am the Executive Vice President of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. And at first, I want to thank council staff, both former and present, for forging such a creative and innovative partnership, helping tradable sector companies grow, Main Street businesses get mentored. And the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, GSEC, we enthusiastically support this effort and encourage you to vote yes tonight. Creating a strong business community is at the heart of growing a community, as we all know. GSEC has been working with Mark Haney, Rick, Monique, and the entire Growth Factory staff from early on, and they know exactly what an entrepreneurial community needs. You know, the support to, you know, figure out a problem, the expertise to overcome challenges and access to capital. And if you've ever worked with businesses, you know that these are key factors in determining their success or failure, and the Growth Factory is set up to help them succeed. By being the first community to formally partner with the Growth Factory, it further shows that Roseville is a trendsetter in the region and is one of the best places to do business within the greater Sacramento area. This agreement that Wayne laid out has many tangible benefits, from retail space, events that generate activity in the downtown, support that's provided, connections, and those ideations that can actually become actions and businesses can all occur in downtown Roseville and bring in people to enjoy its historic nature. Our research team conducted an economic impact analysis, which is in your packet, that shows what would happen if one tech company comes to Roseville and scale, and what would happen if one Main Street business did the same. And you can see the economic impact. If just the two companies happened, you'd see the economic impact over five years to be at $9 million. Now, imagine if it's two, three, four. You can extrapolate what that result could mean to the community. And for all those reasons, we encourage you to vote yes. Support the Growth Factory and the entrepreneurship community within Roseville. Thank you, guys, very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Zach Dunning. I was the founder of a software business called Hank. I grew up here, moved to the Bay Area for about 10 years, and came back to leverage my parents' retirement and build a startup, which, I mean, it paid off for them, so, and myself. So, we tried to run a startup here. I read all the books, I did everything, but there wasn't resources in Sacramento at the time to really help. We went to every event we could, eventually gravitated towards the Bay Area. We went to an accelerator there for a financing round. We were unable to fundraise, and we came back and found people here that believed in us. And we fundraised, we raised a great angel round. Mark is one of our investors. We built the business from the ground up. I found a co-founder. I grew the business substantially. We got acquired by JLL this year, or last year, technically in December. All of our employees are from Sacramento so far. We started hiring a little bit out of state, but by the end of the year, we'll have tripled the amount of employees in Sacramento, specifically hiring out of Sac State, younger guys. We have six guys already, again, in our entry-level program that we're going to probably bring into the business this year. By the end of the year, we'll have grown the business to about 30 to 40 employees. We started at five in January. The majority of those employees will be from Sacramento. This is vitally important. When you're trying to build a business, you just, you claw and do anything you can to gain knowledge, to move the business forward. And what Mark's provided in the last couple of years is invaluable, and I think that building businesses like this could be awesome for Roseville. So, I'm definitely in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. And what kind of business is Hank?
So, it's an AI virtual engineering business for commercial office buildings. So, we run a software business.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Amy Schultz, and I'm the dean for Business and Technology at Sierra College. And on behalf of Sierra College, we wholeheartedly support these efforts that Mr. Wiley and his team have started. We are excited to expand our entrepreneurial ecosystem and workforce ecosystem, so we really see those as hand-in-hand. At Sierra College, we recently launched a makerspace and entrepreneurship center. And so, we really see a lot of synergy where students could come in with a new business idea, start to develop it, and then maybe they want to start that, launch that business in Roseville. And also with Supportive Growth Factory, who is also one of our partners at Sierra College. And we're also proud that Monique Brown is our entrepreneur in residence representing Sierra College. So, there's a lot of connections already. In addition, we share the space, so we would love to have the Venture Lab as our neighbors with our Public Safety Center and Community Ed. And we do see a lot of opportunities to expand inclusive workforce opportunities. So, that's a big part of my role, is workforce education and career technical education. So, finding where the needs are in Roseville and Placer County, and make sure that we are responsive to those programs and can do that. In fact, I want to talk to Zach after this to see what he needs. So, I appreciate, you know, your support of this program, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cameron Law, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Carlson Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship at Sacramento State. And we're really excited about the potential partnership with this opportunity at the Entrepreneurship Center here on Vernon Street. There's two key partnerships that I think that this activity will leverage, one being the Placer Center Ranch that will be right-connected to the city of Roseville, and that will spur a ton of innovation and entrepreneurial activity that will connect students to the downtown center here, as well as spur that entrepreneurial workforce. Also, a partnership that we have with the Western Placer Waste Management Authority to solve some of their growing needs around the circular economy and really spurring those innovation-driven businesses. For me, entrepreneurship is a key driver to economic development, and I believe that city of Roseville can be a key partner to driving that here in the region. Our vision at the Carlson Center is to build this region into being a premier hub of innovation and entrepreneurship, and I believe that this will be a key linchpin to igniting that change here. So, strongly in support of this endeavor, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments this evening? Okay, I'll close public comment. The council members have any other questions?
I have some comments. I am super excited about this. This completes the full circle of what we need for economic development in our city. Many years ago, we had a failed attempt at something much less downtown, and they ended up, we didn't have people down here, they weren't having any events down here, and it was pretty much just a space, and it was frustrating. And I remember going on a tour with you folks, trying to sell you on our courthouse, trying to get you down here, and this is so much better than that. This is going to be a really cool opportunity for our entrepreneurs, and I know people in the community that are doing stuff out of their garage, they're trying ideas on their own, they don't have the support. And so, this is a fantastic way to give people some professional help and really see if their ideas are worth building on. And I know even a great benefit of having it downtown is we're surrounded by mom-and-pop stores all up and down the street, mom-and-pop businesses. They're not all retail. And they're going to love this, too, having events where they can come and learn to grow their business and expand their business and have professionals help them with issues. I think this is just wonderful, and I'm super, super excited, very supportive of it. So, thank you for coming downtown and making Roseville even better, and again, completing that economic circle that we need.
Yeah, I see it, just like Scott sees it. Thank you. And not all of our businesses are Adventist or Penumbra. A good number of our businesses that belong to the chamber are small businesses. And so, thank you for your perseverance, because it's not straight up, is it? No? You get knocked down, somebody said, "You get knocked down seven times, you get up eight." So, thank you. You know, I had the opportunity to talk with Gordon Fowler, so I was, you know, anybody who knows me knows I try to do my due diligence on everything, and he was just over the moon, excited that we were going to be giving it another try, and so, thank you. And happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you.
Mark, we've worked together many times over the years. I can't tell you how excited I am that you're involved in this project and that we're going to start moving and shaking more down here. I mean, I see great things to come here, and, you know, Rick, Monique, I think this is just an all-star team, and I just, you know, I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said, but I just, I'm just super excited, and I'm so glad you're on board, so thank you.
I'm going to have to say, I think it's, timing is everything, and this was the right time. And I'm excited, especially you're talking about Sierra College, Sac State, and I just see this helping business and then, and being innovative and doing something new that we don't even know about yet. So, you know, I think there's people out there that have ideas, and they just need a start, and I see this as making a big difference in their life. So, thank you for coming.
Yeah, agreed. Welcome to Roseville, or welcome back to Roseville, I shall say. I know you are very loyal to our city, and we appreciate everything that you've done. You have not forgotten where you've come from, that's for sure. And I also see this as just such an incredible catalyst project, you know, starting here on Vernon Street, but its vibrations will be felt throughout our region. So, thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. And I'm sorry it took us a long time to get to your project. But with that, unless my council members have any other comments, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Yes, thank you. So, tonight, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22158, approving a lease agreement and a memorandum of lease by and between the city of Roseville and Growth Factory, and authorizing the city manager to execute them on behalf of the city of Roseville, and adopting the Resolution Number 22159, approving a program agreement by and between the city of Roseville and Growth Factory, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the city of Roseville, and also adopting an ordinance Number 6495, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021/22 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriate measure. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
I'm going to go with Councilmember, no, Councilmember Mendoza with a second by Councilmember Albert.
She can go seniority with Albert. Small business owner, Mendoza.
With that, we'll do a roll call, starting off with Vice Mayor Haldeshel.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Yes, five to zero votes.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne and Melissa. Okay, our next item up is 7.3, the fiscal year 2020/21 surplus budget amendment.
For the exciting stuff. Right, exactly.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and council members. I'm Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. As you'll recall, back in January, city staff brought forward the fiscal year 2021 year-end general fund surplus that totaled a little over $28 million, and council approved spending a little over $5 million at that time. Tonight, Scott Pettingill, our budget manager, will present a staff recommendation for a budget adjustment to approve to spend another $9 million of that surplus. And then he'll review the recommended plan for the remaining resources from last fiscal year. So, Scott, I'll turn the presentation over to you.
Thank you. Scott Pettingill, Budget Manager. And as Dennis indicated, staff is recommending a $9 million budget adjustment this evening from a remaining 21 general fund year-end surplus funds. And in addition, I'll be providing overview of the overall spending plan for the remaining balance of those funds. For background, the city ended fiscal year 21 with a general fund surplus of $28.5 million due to conservative budgeting of sales and property taxes, due to the pandemic salary savings, and some expenditure controls we put in place during the pandemic. In January of this year, City Council approved the use of 5.4 of these funds for street resurfacing, vehicle replacement, and replacement of the general fund contingency. This budget adjustment is labeled as first budget adjustment and is highlighted in green. Tonight, we are recommending the use of 9 million of the surplus funds for several high-priority items. I'll go into more detail on these items in the following slides, and this budget adjustment is highlighted in blue. is labeled as first budget adjustment and is highlighted in green. Tonight, we are recommending the use of 9 million of the surplus funds for several high priority items. I'll go into more detail on these items in the following slides, and this budget adjustment is highlighted in blue. The balance of the general fund surplus funds will be recommended to establish a Development Services Stabilization Reserve, which will be discussed in more depth on the next agenda item, and fund some high priority items in the '23 budget, and these items are highlighted in yellow and orange on the slide. The recommended $9 million budget adjustment included in this council item will provide funds for equipment replacement, facility rehab, vehicle replacement, the police department's real-time crime center, a transfer to funds that were significantly impacted by the pandemic, and the following slides provide additional details on each of these items. The $2.3 million in recommended equipment replacement funding will support requirements for the park, recreation, libraries department, fire department, and police departments. For the parks, recreation, libraries department, staff recommends appropriating about $800,000 to replace library self-checkout equipment at all three libraries. The current self-checkout equipment is no longer supported, and the equipment has exceeded its expected lifespan. The pumps and motors at the Roseville Aquatics Complex Center and Mike Shalito Pool are recommended for replacement because they reach the end of their life. In the fire department, $750,000 is recommended to replace defibrillators that are nearing the end of their service life, and this equipment is critical component of advanced life support, and are located on each of the fire trucks and ladder trucks. This item also includes a recommendation to replace two hazardous chemical detectors for the fire department that are no longer supported by the manufacturer, as well as $200,000 for replacement radios that are designed to be safely utilized in round hazardous material situations. And lastly, approximately $200,000 is recommended to replace a firing range at the police department, and this range was stalled in 1998, and many of the range equipment is worn out, damaged, and needs to be replaced. So moving on to facility rehab, a total of $2 million is recommended in this category. $1 million of this funding will be used for the replacement of tennis courts at the Mahaney Park, which currently have large structural cracks and suffer from drainage issues. This budget adjustment will also fund $200,000 in concrete repairs throughout the park system, $200,000 to rehabilitate the concession facility at Royal Park, and $300,000 to replaster and tile Mike Shalito indoor pool. An additional $300,000 of this funding will be used to rehabilitate the fire department's live burn prop that is located at the fire training tower, and this update will ensure that the training center complies with National Fire Protection Association guidelines. $380,000 is recommended for the replacement of armored vehicle for the police department. The armored vehicle that the police department currently utilizes is a regional asset that serves Roseville, Lincoln, Rockland, and Placer County. The current vehicle is over 17 years old, and because it's a regional asset, it takes an extended period of time for deploying the field. The new vehicle will be stored at Roseville PD, which will allow for it to be quickly deployed in event of an emergency situation. A total of $240,000 of the surplus will support the police department's real-time crime center. The facility improvements and equipment will enable the real-time crime center to provide real-time information to field personnel to make efficient and effective decisions when responding to crimes in progress, sorry. Lastly, 4.1 of the surplus general funds are recommended to be transferred to the Youth Development Fund and the Unemployment Insurance Fund. Both these funds were significantly impacted by the pandemic. The Youth Development Fund realizes significant deficit in '21 due to site closures and attendance restrictions. The recommended transfer of 3.5 million will bring the fund back to its pre-pandemic level as of the end of fiscal year '21. Additional transfers are included in the '23 budget to maintain the fiscal sustainability of this fund. Unemployment Insurance Fund realized increased payments due to layoffs of part-time staff during the pandemic. The increase in payments resulted in decrease in available resource in this fund by $634,000, from approximately $1 million to $400,000. The recommended transfer of $600,000 will bring the fund back to its pre-pandemic levels. So in summary, the total amount of items recommended in this budget adjustment is $9 million. And so as mentioned earlier, I'm going to go through and briefly provide an overview of what the spending plan is for the remaining balance of those funds. This plan will include the establishment of a Development Services Stabilization Reserve of approximately $2 million, and the establishment of the policy governing this reserve and appropriation of these funds is included in the next agenda item. The remaining $12.1 million of the FY21 general fund surplus is included in the fiscal year '23 budget, which will be released on Friday. The fiscal year '23 budget recommends appropriation of $2 million into a pension reserve trust, $9.6 million towards the Roseville Sports Complex, and $500,000 towards the replacement of fire station alerting system. These items will be discussed in more detail as part of the budget hearings. In summary, staff recommends that council approve a budget adjustment to appropriate $9 million in fiscal year '22 budget from the fiscal year '21 general fund surplus to support needed equipment replacement, facility rehab, vehicle replacement, the real-time crime center, and transfers to significantly impacted funds by the pandemic. This concludes my presentation, and we are available to answer any questions, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions of council members, of staff on the presentation?
So, did you have a question?
Go ahead.
So on the Youth Development Fund, are we also funding that through CARES or ARPA as well?
That's correct.
And this is just a portion of the funding?
Yeah, because the American Rescue Plan Act was passed in March of 2021, that funding can't provide support for what happened before then. And so we're using general fund resources for the period up to the end of fiscal year '21, and then we'll use Rescue Plan for this year and next year.
Thank you.
Just had a quick question. I think the items that were listed are very needed, very important. I just wanted to go back to address some of our planning meetings that we had as a council. We identified a bunch of things we wanted to see added. When are those coming to us? Is that in this last piece?
Yeah, you'll actually see it a little later in another agenda item.
Great, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, we'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll close public comment.
The City Council will consider adopting ordinance Number 6492, authorizing certain amendments to fiscal year 2021/22 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriate measure. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeschild with a second by Councilmember Akouchi. With that, we'll start off our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Akouchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you both.
You're staying there like maybe you're on net.
The next 15 minutes, okay.
Okay, we'll move on to 7.4, city of Roseville financial policies for fiscal year 2022/23 and budget adjustment.
The purpose of this agenda item is to approve the city's financial policies, including one new policy and updates to three existing policies, and to approve a budget adjustment based on the recommended new policy. Adoption of written financial policies institutionalizes good financial management, clarifies the city's strategic intent, defines boundaries for staff, is viewed positively by bond rating agencies, promotes long-term financial planning, helps manage risks to the city's financial condition, and complies with established best practices. The city's financial policies establish and maintain appropriate and responsible financial guidance for staff to follow when we're developing the budget, when we're making recommendations to the city council, and when we're fulfilling our role as fiscal stewards of public funds. Tonight, staff are recommending that council approve the Consolidated Financial Policies document that includes the existing policies that are listed on this slide, which are not recommended for any updates, as well as three existing policies listed on the next slide that are recommended to be updated, and one new policy. First, the budget development policy is recommended to be updated to reflect the city's practice to allocate indirect costs charged to capital improvement projects. As discussed at the February Council Goals Workshop, the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP rehabilitation funding policy, is recommended to be updated to add funding for street maintenance because existing funding sources aren't adequate to maintain the city's roadway infrastructure, and the CIP funding policy is also recommended to increase the additional annual funding from $500,000 to $1 million of general fund resources to ramp up toward fully funding the rehabilitation and replacement of general fund assets that we use to deliver general fund services. And then the pension funding policy is recommended to be updated to establish and to make contributions to a Section 115 Pension Trust Fund, which was also discussed at the Council Goals Workshop. And then finally, a new policy is being recommended to establish and fund a new Development Services Stabilization Reserve. The purpose of this new reserve policy is to set aside resources that the city council may draw from to maintain adequate staffing to continue delivering development services during an economic downturn. The reserve will be funded by fee revenue collected by development services in years when actual revenue exceeds budget estimates. The fee revenue used to fund the reserve will be general fund fee revenue, which oftentimes is collected in one fiscal year, but then is spent over multiple fiscal years, for example, for things like building inspections. No nexus-based development impact fee revenue will be used to fund the reserve. We're only talking about general fund fee revenue, that's typically flat-dollar fees that are based on the valuation of a building project. The city will use this reserve to bridge gaps between projected and actual development revenues during periods of significant revenue declines, like a recession. The policy target goal for this new reserve is equal to six months of estimated Development Services Department revenue in the general fund in the building, planning, and engineering sections, which is approximately $2.8 million. That's six months' worth of the revenue for those groups. The budget adjustment that's recommended with this item tonight would begin funding the reserve with $2 million of that fiscal year '21 general fund year-end surplus, which was actually generated by the Development Services Department. This portion of the surplus was derived from revenue collected from development services in excess of their fiscal year '21 budget estimate. So again, this reserve would only be used to maintain development services in the future during an economic downturn. So as new financial policies or changes to existing financial policies are identified, staff will recommend them to the city council and then incorporate them into this Consolidated Financial Policies document that we're recommending for your approval tonight. Staff annually review all of the financial policies and recommend readoption of them each year as part of the budget process, like we're doing tonight. So the staff recommendation tonight is to adopt the financial policies for next fiscal year and approve a budget adjustment to begin funding a new Development Services Stabilization Reserve, and I want to thank you. And Scott and I are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, any questions?
Okay, Councilmember Albert.
On the $2.8 million reserve, that's for six months of equivalent of no revenue whatsoever. So in reality, this could last years for a multi-year downturn. Okay, thank you.
So where did that $2.8 million come from? Did we overcharge development?
Absolutely not.
And this is meets the nexus?
So the way these general fund fees work, they're based on the valuation of a development project. And so we could collect a large fee, let's say in May, this month, and Development Services could use those revenues to pay for building inspections for the next couple of years on a large project. And so by establishing a reserve with revenues that we've collected in excess of budget, we would have money available over the next year or two if we were suddenly found ourselves in a recession.
I just, yeah, so thank you. Now, I just think it's important, both Mike Isom and I were at the North State Building Industry Association today, at their Builders Council, and, you know, there's cautionary tale about increasing revenue, and then another jurisdiction compares and contrasts, and they increase it, and then it just, so I just want to make sure that we can message this in a way that doesn't appear, that shows that we are meeting our city goals of being fiscally prudent in a changing environment. So thank you.
I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this item? Okay, then, we'll get back to council unless there's any other deliberations, if we have a motion.
Thank you. So the City Council will consider adopting a Resolution Number 22153 to adopt the city of Roseville's financial policies effective July 1, 2022, and adopt an ordinance Number 6490, authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021/22 budget, and declaring this ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriate measure. If I can get a motion to adopt.
I'll move that.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeschild, and a second by Councilmember Akouchi. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschild.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Akouchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously on a five to zero vote.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have 7.5, the Housing Successor Agency City Council Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Funding allocations and Budget Adjustment. Good evening.
Mayor Bernasconi and members of the council, I'm Tricia Isom, Housing Manager in the Economic Development Department. Tonight, I have with me Susannah Crowell, and she's going to be giving you a presentation on our homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and members of the city council. I'm Susannah Crowell, Housing Analyst in the Economic Development Department, and like Tricia said, tonight I will be presenting the 2022/2023 funding recommendations for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, also along with this budget adjustment. Homeless prevention and rapid rehousing was established in 2017 with an initial three-year commitment from Sutter Health's Getting to Zero Campaign. Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Services provide temporary assistance to prevent a household from becoming homeless, as well as assistance to obtain permanent housing for those who are currently homeless. Through this grant program, the city's internal homeless team and collaboration with Placer County's Continuum of Care were better equipped to address homelessness in Roseville. Account of both sheltered and unsheltered homeless in Roseville and throughout Placer County took place earlier this year. As required, the COC submitted the results to HUD at the end of April, and it's anticipated those results will be available to the public by the end of, by July. The housing successor agencies are allowed to use up to $250,000 per year on homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. Roseville has used the maximum low-mod funds for this purpose since the program inception in 2017. In 2020, Roseville applied for and was awarded state permanent local housing allocation funds for a five-year period for both city of Roseville and city of Rockland. This grant will fund the homeless prevention rapid rehousing program and infuse almost $4 million into the community over the next five years, excuse me, five years total. We are continually thankful for our partnership with city of Rockland and their willingness to allow Roseville to apply for and manage these funds on their behalf. The Roseville Housing Division received four applications from seven different agencies in response to the 2022/23 Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing Notice of Funding Availability. Applications were reviewed using criteria from prior years, as well as city council's direction to place the greatest weight on measurable outcomes from prior awards. The review panel consisted of staff from city of Roseville Housing, city of Rockland Housing, Roseville Police Department Social Services Unit, and city of Roseville Government Relations. 2021 outcome, excuse me, 2021 measurable outcomes considered included number of clients served and housed in relation to the overall cost per client, cost per beneficiary or leveraging overall cost and other resources of funding, collaboration and coordination with local partners and with local cities, need or gap in services, and serving difficult-to-house populations that are currently underserved. So the funding recommendations are as follows. ASK, which is a collaboration between AMI Housing, St. Vincent de Paul, and Kids First, $500,000; The Gathering Inn, $221,700; Salvation Army, $60,000; and Stand Up Placer in collaboration with Lighthouse Counseling, $125,000. Tonight, we recommend that city council adopt a resolution to approve funding recommendations for the 2022/23 Homeless Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program, and authorize city manager to execute all related grant agreements, and adopt an ordinance to approve the necessary budget adjustment in the amount of $2,240,020 in revenue and $448,004 in expenditures to fund this five-year homeless prevention and rapid rehousing grant project. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Let's start here. Any questions of staff about the presentation?
It's just nice to see that we're getting the funds, and we can do this. That's very nice.
Yeah, no, I'd like to, just, I'd like to make a comment. I had an opportunity recently to take a tour of The Gathering Inn with Darlene Cullavan and see the work they're doing. and see the work they're doing there. And so I'm real pleased to see that that is funded in here. And, you know, you know how much I love the work you guys do. And I think that's what helps us stand out from other, from other communities in the region and certainly in our county. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to this item? You can come forward. Good evening.
David Lloyd with The Gathering Inn, and Bruce stole my thunder. I'm really just here on behalf of Keith Dietrich, our CEO, and all the executive staff to thank you, Mayor, and city council members and the wonderful job that staff continues to do year after year after year. The Gathering Inn is committed to work hand in hand with the City of Roseville in partnership to reach out and lift up those that are less fortunate and to provide stable housing, stable health, and a stable lifestyle. And this program here does exactly that. So we are very grateful for all of you and staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Close public comment and bring it back to the council. Any other deliberations before we have a motion?
Thank you. So tonight, the city council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22160, approving funding recommendations and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the City of Roseville, and adopting ordinance 6496 authorizing certain amendments to the fiscal year 2021-22 budget and declaring the ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriate measure. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion on the floor made by Councilmember Mendoza with a second by Councilmember Rucucci. We'll start off roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschildt.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Are we all doing okay, or do we need a little break? Or do we want to just take them on our own as needed?
Let's give away some more money.
Okay, all right, we'll power through. We will move on to item 8.1. In front of us, we have the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Grants Advisory Commission Funding Recommendations. And we have our Housing Manager Tricia Isom and our Economic Development Director Melissa Anguiano.
I get to stay. And yes, I will be presenting the Citizens Benefit Fund and Reach Funding Grant Recommendations for Fiscal Year 22-23. So since the Grants Advisory Commission was created in 1994, the Citizens Benefit Fund has provided over $16.5 million to local nonprofits. The Reach Fund and in past years, the Roseville Autumn Mall Community Fund provided another half million totaling $17.2 million. These monies have been granted directly to nonprofits in our community that serve our residents and improve quality of life through a variety of programs and services. City council approved new grant funding priorities two years ago, which reflect the community needs analysis completed in 2020. The grant funding priorities consist of strategic one-time grants, which are used for innovative programs, capital improvements, or new initiatives, operational mission support grants for projects or programs that address community need and have demonstrated effectiveness, and small requests of up to $10,000 to go towards either new programs or support existing operations. The commission received a total of 30 applications, split between all the priority groups. Staff reviewed all applications, and two were deemed incomplete, so 28 applications were scored by the commission. This year, the commission had a total of $279,681 to award to applicants, which is less than recent years due to lower interest rates, as well as a loan from the fund, which has since been paid back. And the loan did support small businesses during the beginning of the pandemic. The commission scored each application on a 100-point scale and used similar review criteria to previous cycles. 21 out of the 28 applications submitted are being recommended for funding tonight, and the applications received represented all five social determinants of health, as well as a wide variety of programs and services that serve populations throughout the community, including youth, families, and seniors. At this time, staff recommends that city council adopt the Grants Advisory Commission recommendations to fund 21 grants in the amount of $279,681 from the Citizens Benefit Fund and Reach Fund. I wanted to quickly note that in the new fiscal year, the commission plans to consider an off-cycle round of funding used from the American Rescue Plan Funds as programmed in the proposed budget. And this concludes my presentation.
Okay, excellent. Any questions of staff about the presentation?
Just one, one question. So, um, how, well, um, there's a funding amount of $7,000, but it seems like it's an umbrella organization. It's called Defending the Cause Regional Alliance that incorporates some of those. How was, maybe, maybe the chair of the committee can answer this, but how was, how was that when you have something that is an umbrella organization that also has other organizations? Is that weighted differently, or?
They're not weighted differently at this time. Everything is weighted the same. There are very specific questions. I think there's about 15 or 16 questions, and they're all, each question is weighted differently. But what I do is I take all of the commissioner's scores and I, they rank actually each application, and then we average each application. So then they just get ranked down the line.
Okay. That's it. That's the only question I have.
Okay. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone tonight that would like to comment on this item? Good evening, Ellison.
Didn't realize we'd have such a well-attended earlier meeting, but good evening.
Oh, it's been a long meeting. Thanks for sticking around.
Mayor, members of the council, city manager and staff, and remaining staff and other people who are still here. My name's Ellison Carroll. I'm the commission, with the grant commission. And I just wanted to share a few things. One is I'm just really grateful to serve on this commission. This is a really special commission, and it's neat to hear about all the different nonprofit communities that we have here. We can't give money to everyone, but we hear about a lot of good things, and it kind of ties into the innovation entrepreneurship stuff we heard about earlier, too. So there may be some synergistic opportunities there. So this year, we did have some new applicants, and that's always encouraging. We may not have funded them all, but it's just, it's nice to see every year that we're getting new interest, new opportunities, new ideas in the community. We did have smaller requests this year. We did have less money, as Tricia noted, but I think we had a smaller pool of applicants as well. So just interesting dynamics that I noted. This was our second year of changing our process. We did with both the community needs assessment and then internally, we spent a lot of time two years ago reevaluating how we're doing our, how we evaluate the grant applications, how we consider the different groups. And so this was our second year. We intentionally did not change the process. However, I think going into this next year, we do want to look for opportunities to improve. Again, tying into Wayne's presentation on the innovation, I felt like, you know, his cycle where you talk about making changes, acting on those, learning, measuring, and incorporating that back in, the iterative implementation approach. So that's definitely something we want to take into account. We welcome council comments as well as community comments. So anyone who's still watching the meeting, for applicants who have applied, whether they were successful or not, we definitely welcome input there. I know that all but seven applicants were funded this year, and that's something that in the past, you know, we want, didn't want initially the goal to be to give everyone a little bit of money. And so I think we would welcome council's direction on ways to make sure that we're really having a competitive evaluation process and investing strategically. I think we also could use some guidance in terms of how do we prioritize community impact? I don't know how much you went through the grant applications, but there was a wide range, I think, of community impact there. And so additional direction there, I think, would be welcome. And I could speak specifically to the one application, Defending the Cause, even though, or it's called the Alliance now, I think they changed their name, even though they do work with a lot of different groups, that project was specifically to help fund a database that helps, it was for that main organization to help recruit and promote different activities across all their organizations. I think they were also looking for some storage space and things, too. So it wasn't, even though they work with a lot of organizations, it was directly funding their main organization to be able to further impact they have for the other groups.
That answer.
And I know I'm right about time, but I just wanted to say, we have made intentional steps to improve accountability. We do two new reports that we didn't do in the past each year. And we also try to increase visibility and incorporate that accountability back into the evaluation process. So when we evaluate every year, if an applicant has received grants in the past, we do have a scoring amount set aside for that. Are they really doing what they say they're going to do with that grant funds, and how impactful is that in the community? So just wanted to thank you all again, thank staff for their assistance. And again, I think further direction, as you guys have it, or comments, I'm available to answer questions as well. But we definitely want to have a continuous improvement process and look forward to working with you guys to do that.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for serving.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are there any, is there anyone else here who would like to comment on this item?
Okay, so we will start to take some motions. I know some of us have conflicts, so we will leave the dais.
Thank you. So just so the record is clear, we will have several council members stepping out of the room and leaving the dais so that they're able to have a transparent process in their selection and allocation of funding tonight. So some of these conflicts may be financial, other conflicts may be that some of our council members serve on different boards. And so in order to alleviate the idea of improper voting, we're going to have them step out of the room.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
We're gonna have, yeah. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. I just wanted to make a comment based on the process. When I was first elected, I know for years, prior council member Tim Herman and I used to always bring up the issue of, we want some vetting, we don't want to just give money to everybody, we want to score, we want it to actually go towards the goals of the city. And I've just been very impressed with the group. I appreciate that you're struggling and ranking and making sure they justify what they've done in the past before you give it to them again. I think that's very important, and it's prudent for us to look at those organizations and make sure that we are investing, not just giving it to everybody, but doing it to the organizations that are doing the things in the city that we want. So I do appreciate that. I know the pandemic made it really difficult, but I just want to say that, that I'm really glad that we're going through that process. So I'm going to recuse myself.
Well, you don't have to go yet. Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on, I'll let you know, I'll let you know when you can go.
We're gonna take, we're going to be doing four different motions in order to be able to be compliant and so that we're as transparent as possible. So the first motion, we're going to take tonight. Yes, we're gonna request that funding of $25,000 for the Placer Food Bank. If I can get a motion to approve.
Wait, hold on, we haven't announced Mayor Bernascony's actual conflict, what it was.
Oh, you, okay, perfect. So Mayor Bernascony has left the dais due to potential conflict interests due to source of income, as her company Market Shares PR does work for the Placer County Food Bank. I'm sorry, for the Placer Food Bank.
Yep, Placer Food Bank. So I'll make a motion to approve grant funding in the amount of $25,000 to the Placer Food Bank.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeschildt with a second by Councilmember Mendoza. And that will start our roll call vote with Vice Mayor Haldeschildt.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And again, the record will reflect that Mayor Bernascony recused herself, did not participate in the discussion or the vote on the matter.
Go get her.
Thank you.
You go and.
Your turn to leave.
Your turn to leave.
So, yes, now that we're going to ask Councilmember Alverd to leave the room, as his conflict, potential conflict of interest is due to his spouse working for the Lippi, I'm sorry, Lily Putts, sorry, Children's Services. Thank you, welcome back. So if I can get a motion to approve grant funding in the amount of $5,000 to Lily Putts Children's Services.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Rucucci with a second by Vice Mayor Haldeschildt. With that, we'll start our roll call vote with Vice Mayor Haldeschildt.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
And the record will reflect, again, that Councilmember Alverd recused himself from the matter, did not participate, and did not vote on this item. Councilmember Mendoza, please leave the room.
Maybe.
Yeah, Councilmember Alverd. So Councilmember Mendoza will be leaving the dais as a result of him, sir, and both, I'm sorry, Alverd and Mendoza will not be participating on this item for the Roseville Police Activities League, as they both serve on the Board of Directors. So with that, we're going to move to approve grant funding in the amount of $10,500 to the Roseville Police Activities League. If I can get a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion on the floor by Councilmember Rucucci with a second Vice Mayor Haldeschildt. With that, we'll start our roll call vote by Vice Mayor Haldeschildt.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
And on a vote of three to zero, it passes with the recusal and nonparticipation of Councilmember Alverd and Councilmember Mendoza. Record will reflect that neither participator or voted on the matter.
Back to you, Mayor.
And now that we're all together, we'll have another motion on the floor to approve a grant funding for the remainder of the organizations recommended by the Grant Advisory Commission. If I can get a motion to approve the remainder of those that were submitted?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Vice Mayor Haldeschildt with a second by Councilmember Alverd. We'll start off our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeschildt.
Yes.
Councilmember Alverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero, and the record will reflect that all council members participated on the remainder of those items.
We'll move on to item 8.2, which is the Fiscal Year 21-22 Second Quarter Financial Report and Fiscal Update. Good evening.
Good evening again, Mayor Bernascony and council members. Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and CFO. Tonight, the city's budget manager, Scott Petten Gill, will provide an update on the city's budget status through the second quarter of the current fiscal year, based on the second quarter report, which is included in your packet, as well as more updated information on significant general fund tax revenue and the general fund year-end surplus projection for the current fiscal year. And then I'll wrap up with the budget schedule and an update on the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So take it away, Scott.
Thank you. Scott Petten Gill, Budget Manager. So as Dennis mentioned, tonight I'll be presenting our second quarter financial report, and this report includes an overview of our general fund, major enterprise funds, as well as our fire facilities funds, public facilities fund, and strategic improvement funds. And then Dennis will conclude with an update on our budget schedule and the American Rescue Plan Act. I'll begin with an overview of our general fund revenues. The provided bar chart shows the percentage of revenue received on the left-hand side and the revenue budget on the right-hand side of this slide. Overall, general fund revenues as of the second quarter are at 28% of budget, or approximately $47 million in revenues received to compared our estimated revenue budget of $164 million. The primary factor contributing to our revenues being at 28% rather than 50%, as you would expect to the halfway point in the fiscal year, is because of the timing associated with our property tax revenues. Property tax revenues were at 2% as of the second quarter, because the city receives most of its funding in the third and fourth quarters of the fiscal year. The city's Bradley Burns and Measure B sales tax through the second quarter are at 39% and 42% of budget, and the sales tax received as of the second quarter is derived from taxable sales through October of '21. The public safety sales and use taxes at, I'm sorry, go back one slide. Thank you. Public safety, sales, and use taxes at 51% of budget, and transit, occupancy, tax revenues are at 80% of budget, or approximately $2 million through the second quarter. On the following slides, I'll go into more detail on the year-end forecast for these major tax revenues, but I want to continue going through the rest of the items on the slide. Parks, recreation, and library revenues are at 44% of budget. PRL revenues are performing better than last year, but we are anticipating a shortfall at year-end. Parks will offset the shortfall with expenditure savings. Building permit revenues are performing strong at 66%, and plan check revenues are on target at 49% of revenue estimates. Staff anticipate that these revenues will meet or exceed revenue targets by the end of the year. Engineering inspection fees are trending lower than budget at 37%. These lower-than-anticipated revenues will be offset by higher-than-anticipated amount of workload that has shifted to full-cost recovery projects. Then the 11% in grant revenues are due to the timing associated with submitting grant claims and receiving grant funds. And lastly, revenues from other category is tracking at 51% of budget, and this category includes state reimbursements, rural property tax transfers, and business license tax. Next slide. Thank you. This slide provides a year-end projection for sales and use tax. Based on the city's sales tax consultant's latest sales tax analysis and forecast, these revenues are trending higher than anticipated due to strong economic activity in general retail, food products, transportation, and construction sectors. The consultant provides a year-end forecast that includes conservative, most likely, and optimistic scenarios as indicated in the yellow lines in the slide. The consultant's most likely forecasts indicate that revenues will end the year at $72.5 million for Bradley Burns, $13 million above budget estimates, and $28.2 million for Measure B, $7 million above budget estimates. Next slide. The next graph that we update on a regular basis shows multi-year sales tax trend data for the city's four major sales tax generators, Roseville Auto Mall, Creekside Town Center, Fountains, and Roseville Galleria. You can see the effects of the pandemic in 2020 with the significant drop in the first and second quarter of 2020. You can also see the typical seasonal trends in the data with the increases in fourth quarter due to the increased sales during the holidays. The graph shows that Roseville Auto Mall, represented by the blue line at top, has fully recovered from the downtown and sales tax activity has exceeded pre-pandemic levels. The same could be said for the Galleria, which is represented by the yellow line. Sales tax revenues from Creekside and Fountains have fully recovered from the pandemic but remain close to pre-pandemic levels. This next slide provides a year-end projection for property tax and transit occupancy tax, or TOT. The previously mentioned, the low level of property tax revenue received to date is because the city receives most of revenue in third and fourth quarters. And based on information provided by the Placer County Assessor and the city's property tax consultant, staff anticipate that this revenue stream will exceed year-end estimates by approximately $1.6 million, or $60.8 million in total. TOT revenues have been reporting, performing much stronger than anticipated in fiscal year '22 as the second quarter revenues were at $2.1 million. And the growth has continued through April with revenues received close to $3 million. And this amount exceeds our budget estimate of $2.6 million. Staff budgeted a conservative amount for TOT in '22 due to economic uncertainty, the pandemic last spring, when we were developing the budget at that time. If current trends continue, T in '22 will very well end the year above $4 million. Moving on to general fund expenditures. Overall, general fund expenditures are tracking on target compared to budget at 47% through the first six months of the fiscal year. The slightly lower spending rate, 47% versus 50% through half the year elapsed, is primarily due to cost savings from vacancies. The Economic Development Department is tracking at 80% of budget through the second quarter, primarily due to leave playoffs, associate retirement of staff, annual membership fees paid at the beginning of the fiscal year, and the timing associated with posting reimbursements for labor costs in the housing division. We anticipate that department will end the year on budget, though. In total, general fund departments anticipate ending the year slightly below budget in the range of $2 to $5 million. This next slide provides a year-end projection for the general fund. We anticipate that the general fund will end the year between $25 and $30 million in surplus. The projection is based on most likely revenue forecasts provided by our revenue consultants. As previously mentioned, we are anticipating revenue in exercise in sales tax, property tax, and TOT. And these amounts are highlighted in the blue section of the slide. It also counts for approximately $5 million in expenditure savings highlighted in green. The second quarter report also includes an update on each of the city's enterprise funds, including the Youth Development Fund. As of the end of the second quarter, electric fund revenue is tracking higher than a budget at 61%. These results are attributed to new development, the hydroelectric surcharge approved rate increases, and higher-than-expected customer usage. Revenues in the EU funds range from 56% in waste services, 54% in water operations, and 47% in wastewater. Revenues in the waste services and water operation funds are trending above estimates due to higher-than-anticipated consumption in new development. Transit operating revenues continue experiencing the effects of reduced services and losses in passenger fares due to low ridership resulting from the pandemic through the second quarter of '22. Pandemic-related fentanyl stimulus and relief funds approved in '21 continue to support Roseville Transit through the fiscal year. Budget actual variances in Transportation Enterprise Fund is due to the timing associated with the primary revenue streams. And the majority of their revenues will realize in the last two quarters of the fiscal year. Revenues in the Youth Development Fund are at 37% of budget through the second quarter of the fiscal year, while enrollment continues to rebound some factors such as guidelines established for child care services that require attendance limitations, parents continuing to work from home, and temporary part-time staff shortages continue to contribute to the reduced revenues. And the next slide is an overview of Enterprise Fund operating expenditures. Operating expenditures in Electric Fund are on budget through the second quarter at 49% of budget. Spending in the EU funds are tracking lower than budget at around 40% due to vacant positions, COVID-related limitations, operational plans during the beginning of the fiscal year. Transit, transportation expenditures are tracking lower than anticipated due to vacancies and adjustment-related transit ridership reductions. The Youth Development Fund is at 37% through the second quarter due to measures we have taken to reduce operational costs to mitigate the impacts of the decreased enrollment in the program. Overall, the fund has projected the year in a deficit in fiscal year '22. Staff is addressing that projected shortfall with American Rescue Plan Act funding included in the '23 budget. And lastly, this slide provides an update on revenues in the fire facilities, public facilities, and strategic improvement funds. The sustained increase in development activity during this fiscal year has resulted in all three of these funds trending above budget, with the fire facilities at 71% of budget, public facilities at 80% of budget, and strategic improvement at 79% of budget. We anticipate by year-end that revenues in all three of these funds will exceed estimates. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll turn to Dennis.
Thanks, Scott. So for the current fiscal year, staff will bring the third quarter report to council in August with a more refined estimate of that projected year-end general fund surplus amount. And then after the city's independent audit is complete, staff will return in January with the final year-end results that will be reported in our fourth quarter budget report. While preparing this update for you on the current fiscal year, staff have been working this week putting the final touches on the budget book for next fiscal year, which starts July 1st. Staff will be releasing the budget this Friday on May 20th. And then the city council will hold a budget workshop on Tuesday, May 31st. And then the budget is scheduled to be adopted on June 15th. And then before we conclude, we also wanted to provide an update on the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And so the, as I mentioned earlier, the act was signed into law by the president in March of last year. As you know, the city was allocated about $17.6 million. We received half of that last May. We're expecting the other half any day now. I'm waiting to hear when the wire comes in. I haven't received it yet, though. While the funding came with a number of eligible categories of spending, Roseville fell into the category of replacing lost revenue based on the calculation that was provided by the law. And that replacing lost revenue category provides broad latitude in how the city can use the funding to spend on government services. I won't go into details again about the mechanics of that lost calculation. We did have our auditors review it, though. We're very confident about it. But I did want to mention, because the city lost more revenue due to the pandemic than the city's allocation, all of that $17.6 million that Roseville was allocated can be spent to support government services, including capital improvement projects. So tonight, we want to provide you just a brief update of the city's spending plan on the next slide. Starting at the top, we have the Entrepreneur Center, which was approved earlier on tonight's agenda, followed by a few recommendations that will be coming to the city council over the next few months, including partial funding for the Corporation Yard Charging Facility that Public Works will be bringing forward, three relatively small IT initiatives, and a request from the chamber for a talent pipeline program. Then we have four items included in the fiscal year '23 proposed budget, including the Johnson Pool Rehabilitation Project, Weber Park improvements, $1 million for grants to nonprofits over the next three years, and support for the city's Youth Development Fund for the current year and next fiscal year. This leaves about $5.5 million currently unallocated, which could be used for a project like Weber Park after the design and outreach is done, if the final cost estimate comes in higher than the $3.3 million that we've included in the proposed budget, or it could be used for other projects or other services. The city has until December of 2024 to obligate the funding and has till December of 2026 to fully expend the funding. So with that update on ARPA, this concludes our presentation and we're available to answer any questions.
Great. Does council have any questions of staff on the presentation?
A short one.
Councilmember Alverd.
The sales and use tax was shown at 39%, but were expected to be over projected budget. That's because of a delay in the payment, right? I just want to, I think I asked that before.
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
A question, maybe this is for our Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director, but because it is on a council priority for us, what would the $3.3 million potentially cover for Weber Park? Because I know that there are lots of ideas out there. But in theory, like, what do you think it could cover or not cover? Because I think it's, we don't know, right?
We don't know yet. And good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the council. I'm Jill Galler, your Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Director. We're reaching out to residents right now. We've already had three public outreach sessions with the residents to see what they want that park to look like. So it could include things such as leveling the park a little bit more. We've talked about the visibility from Main Street of the park. So there may be some grading that needs to be done there. There may be some additional amenities. But we are early in the process and really we want the park to be what the residents want it to be. So we're doing that research right now.
Great. I was just curious what got factored in, so I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll open up the public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this item? No? Okay, I'll close public comment. So if there aren't any other questions.
An informational item only.
Thank you. All right. All right. And then the last one is, we'll have a public hearing. Am I in the right place?
Nope.
Okay. So public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. It's item 9.1, the fiscal year 2022-23 Landscape and Lighting District Assessments, amending and/or approving the.
No, that's not, no, that's 9.1.
Sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
A roll, too. I don't have that. Okay. Okay, so we'll move into item 9.1, I'm sorry. Community Development Block Grant, the 2022 Annual Action Plan and substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan.
Yes, good evening.
Sorry.
No problem. We're just here to give away some more money. So tonight I have with me Christine Fails. She's our Housing Analyst, and she's going to give our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the city council. I'm Christine Fails, Housing Analyst in the Economic Development Department. Tonight, I'm presenting the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, as well as a proposed amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. The City of Roseville has a Community Development Block Grant entitlement jurisdiction and receives an annual allocation of CDBG funds from HUD to promote affordable housing and community development programs for low-income residents. City of Roseville's 2022 CDBG award was recently announced by HUD. Our allocation will be $713,722. In addition, about $500,000 in program income and prior year funding is available to be allocated. The CDBG award is broken down into different funding categories. A maximum of 20% can be allocated for planning and administration, which pays for annual program management and administration of individual CDBG grants. A maximum of 15% of program funds can be allocated for public services, which can go toward programs such as mental health services, food, and services for homeless persons. The remainder of the funds must go toward public facility projects, which could include improvements to infrastructure, activities related to housing, and neighborhood improvements. In order to determine which applications were funded for 2022, staff convened a review panel that consisted of CDBG staff from City of Roseville, two grants advisory commissioners, as well as staff from Thurmond Consulting. Requests for funding under the Public Services category totaled $120,000. The majority of the proposed programs were for ongoing programs under the city's current and past funding cycles. The panel approved the eight activities listed above. Three public facilities projects are recommended for funding in 2022. While CDBG funds assisted with ADA approvals to the exterior of Johnson Pool in the past, the new project will address accessibility, health, and safety items in the interior of the pool house building to allow the existing building to meet ADA and code compliance. The Gathering Inn Office Soundproofing Project will convert existing donations rooms to private soundproof offices for mental health clinicians and interns, as well as soundproofing case manager offices to provide confidential meeting space. And the Volunteers of America project will install a pedestrian gate at their Home Start program in order to provide their residents better access into the complex. Addressing the need for more affordable housing is a high priority need in the city's five-year CDBG plan. Therefore, $425,000 is proposed to be allocated toward support of affordable rental housing development. If approved, the city will release a NOFA for developers to apply for the funds to either acquire real property or for the future development of affordable rental housing. Remaining award funds are proposed to be allocated to the city's owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program, which assists low-income residents with energy-efficient and health and safety-related repairs and increases both the quality of life for the homeowners and the quality of housing stock in Roseville. Staff is also proposing an amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan in order to allocate additional CDBG CV funding to AMI Housing for the Rental Assistance Program and Kids First New Program. Of the $1.2 million in CV funding the city received from HUD, $250,000 is remaining to be allocated to activities. In order to deploy the remaining CV funding into the community, the city must amend the 2019 Annual Action Plan, which will constitute a third amendment to the plan. The city received applications from three organizations for these CARES Act funds. One application was determined to be ineligible as the proposed program was not related to preventing, preparing for, and responding to COVID. AMI Housing and Kids First propose programs to provide rent, back rent, and utility assistance, and both are recommended to receive funding. These funds will help prevent homelessness and provide residents with housing stability. And lastly, staff recommends that the city council receive public comment on the 2022 Annual Action Plan and propose substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan and adopt a resolution to approve them for submission to HUD. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff on the presentation? Okay, this is good news. Okay, I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone here today that would like to make a comment? We've got one. Good evening, David.
Good evening. Thank you again, David Loy out of the Gathering Inn. Actually, waited just for this particular one. If you know me, I am tenacious when it comes to providing robust holistic support services, of which, to me, the greatest priority is mental health. And this does exactly that by help fund our mental wellness program and get our facilities better situated so we can provide those mental health services. So again, I forgot to thank you last time, so I'm going to start with you, Dom, the fragile ego. Thank you, Dom. I greatly appreciate it. Mayor, again, thank you. City Council members, thank you, and staff on behalf of TGI and everybody that puts in the time day in and day out, our gratitude. Thank you very much, and this is very dear to my heart to provide these mental health services. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Are there any other further deliberations before we have a motion?
Nope, we're good. Thank you. With that, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution 22-153, approving the 2022 Annual Action Plan, approving the proposed substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents and certifications on behalf of the City of Roseville. I get motion to approve.
So moved.
I'm going to go with Councilmember Mendoza. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. And second by Councilmember Albert. With that, we'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bernasconi.
Yes.
Your motion passes 5 to 0 unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, our last item now. Item 9.2 is the Fiscal Year 2022-23 Landscape and Lighting District Assessments, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report, ordering the levy and collection of assessments. Okay, and I'll open the public hearing, and we'll hear from staff. Hello, Dennis.
Good evening again. This item is the annual public hearing, and council consideration to approve resolutions to levy the assessments for the city's eight landscaping and lighting districts for next fiscal year. On April 20th of this year, the City Council approved resolutions to initiate the proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the city's landscaping and lighting districts and to take related actions. The public hearing tonight is the final action required by state law that allows the public to comment on the proposed assessments. The assessments are based on engineers' reports prepared for each district, and combined, the city's landscaping and lighting districts are expected to generate about $1.6 million in revenue next fiscal year to fund maintenance and operations of landscaping and lighting improvements within the public rights-of-way and dedicated easements. So tonight, staff recommends that council open the public hearing and then approve resolutions for each of the eight landscaping and lighting districts for next fiscal year, providing approval of the engineers' reports and ordering the levy and collection of the assessments. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions of Dennis? Okay, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this item? Okay, I'll close public comment, close the public hearing. Any other further deliberation from staff before we have a motion? Okay.
Okay, thank you. So with that, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 22-166, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for the historic district landscaping and lighting district fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-167, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the historic district landscaping and lighting district for fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-168, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for the infill area landscaping and lighting district fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-168, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for the infill area landscaping and lighting district fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-169, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the infill area landscape and lighting district for fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-170, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for Johnson Ranch Landscaping and Lighting District fiscal year 2022-23. And adopting Resolution Number 22-171, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Johnson Ranch Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-172, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for the North Central Roseville Specific Plan Landing and, I'm sorry, Landscaping and Lighting District fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution 22-173, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the North Central Roseville Specific Plan Landscape and Lighting District fiscal year 2022-23. Adopting Resolution 22-174, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for Northwest Roseville Specific Plan Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution 22-175, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Northwest Roseville Specific Plan Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution 22-176, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for Olympus Point Landscaping and Lighting District fiscal year 2022-23. Adopting Resolution 22-177, ordering the levy and collection of assessment within the Olympus Point Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2022-23. Adopting Resolution 22-178, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for the Riverside Avenue Landscaping and Lighting District fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-179, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Riverside Avenue Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2022-23. Adopting Resolution 22-180, amending and/or approving the Engineers' Annual Levy Report for the Vernon Street Landscaping and Lighting District fiscal year 2022-23. An adopting Resolution Number 22-181, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Vernon Street Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2022-23. And that is it.
You made it.
So if I can get a motion to approve all of that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Did I miss one?
Oh, yeah. Don't say that.
I'm like, which one? I'm sorry, I got a...
You gotta redo it now.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Haldeshelt, with a second by Councilmember Albert. Is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you. With that, roll call, we'll start off with Vice Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Congratulations. All passed on a 5 to 0 vote unanimously.
Harmon. Okay, we have one last public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to make a comment on any item that's on the agenda? I'll close public comment. And before we adjourn, we'll have comments from council members and our staff. Does staff have anything that they'd like to report this evening?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
No reports, Mayor.
Councilmember Rakucci, you want to...
Just a quickie. We had fun, can't even remember when, last week.
It was at some point, we had fun.
No, we, most of us were at the Lighthouse in Lincoln, where it's an organization that helps with counseling and has resources for people. And we got to be celebrity waiters, and it was just fun. It was just fun. And fun helping raise money for the people and promoting some really good things in our community. And they have offices in both Lincoln, Auburn, and Roseville. And that's my story.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Haldeshelt?
Yeah, if you like dance, if you like theater, if you like art, the Arts Council of Placer County has got a survey out. Encourage you to go to their website and provide your input on what you think we need here in Placer County.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert?
Yeah, last week, Councilmember Rakucci and I got to attend the awards banquet ceremony for Police and Fire, and it's a neat, very formal, fancy, fun dinner. And local church and a lot of volunteers, and Christina Mendoza hosted it, and they had a special guest speaker, I forgot his name, but they brought in our police and fire and families and gave out some awards and basically showed a lot of love to them. You know, our quality of life in our city is really high, and one of the leading reasons for that is a feeling of safety. And they do bring an element to our city to have quick response to our homes in an emergency, whether it's medical, or fire, or some kind of safety thing, and keeping us feeling safe, like we can walk in our neighborhood. So it was nice to show them a lot of love, and I think it was a fun evening, and it was nice to represent the council there. And congratulations, Mayor, because I know at the celebrity waiter thing, your table got the most tips. We were jealous of that, but you did a great job. That was fun.
All right, thank you for that. Yes, that luncheon that we helped, they're still tallying the finals, but they think they're about $90,000 for our community, which helps with family resources, mental health, job placement. They go into schools and help quite a bit, so they're an organization that does a lot of good. We've been at it since 4:30 this afternoon, so I probably had lots of things to talk about, but I know we're all busy with our council duties and our committees and our family roles and all those sorts of things, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that our city attorney has a birthday coming up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What's going on here?
Dion, did you tell her?
So...
Mark Zuckerberg told us.
Public records request.
We want to pass this down. This is from your council. We wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's so touching.
Oh, you're welcome.
Is there a cookie in here?
They're even better, but I'll leave it to you when you want to open it. But with that, I will, I'd like to adjourn us...
Burger king.
Keep going.
Tony, no shake, shake.
Easy now.
You're trying to diversify my love of burgers.
Give them back.
I still owe you.
Love burgers. So it's four gift cards to different burger joints.
No Five Guys in there either, okay?
Trying to diversify my love of burgers. Thank you so much. That's so good.
I thought your kids might enjoy them if you don't.
Yeah, no, of course we will.
Happy birthday. Happy early birthday. Okay, so on that note, we will all be together tomorrow night with Placers County Elected Officials Dinner. We're probably going to be together a lot in the next few weeks. It seems really busy, but I will adjourn us. We will meet again as a council on June 1st at 6:00 PM.
May 31st?
That's the workshop. The meeting is June 1st for the council meeting.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Excellent. Well...